We'll lead off tonight with a pledge of allegiance led tonight by Council President Grimes.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council President Grimes. Next up, we have our moment of silence for those who have lost their lives during COVID-19. Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I just, just a reminder that the United States leads the world in deaths from COVID-19. However, Oregon is forty-sixth in the country of deaths. And so I just want to thank everyone who's been doing all of the things that we've talked about with washing their hands and safely distancing and, and remind, and wearing their masks. And, and a reminder that there is now vaccines available for kids from twelve to fifteen years old. Those approved today. All that being said, we've still lost people and even people that have been vaccinated. So please join me in a moment of silence for those still suffering and those that we've lost to COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. All right, we have one announcement tonight. Tonight's a proclamation declaring the week of May tenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-one as National Police Week in the city of Tuolton. Is there Chief Steel, are you doing a little presentation first before the proclamation?
Yeah, I'd like to say just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Bill Steel, your chief of police, thank you for giving me just a couple of minutes tonight. Since nineteen sixty-two, this has been designated as National Police Week to honor police officers across the nation that have sacrificed their lives in the community safety interests that they serve in. So far in twenty twenty-one, there's been a hundred and nineteen line of duty deaths already. So it's a significant number that affect police officers throughout our country every year. Our police officers are pretty committed to our community, but they know when they show up to work every day that they're putting their personal safety potentially in harm's way. You know, I kind of think about last year, even for me, just Thanksgiving weekend of last year, the Friday after Thanksgiving, our officers responded on a domestic disturbance call involving a man with a handgun. As officers arrived, he ended up shooting the handgun in the direction of the officers. Thankfully, it didn't hit anybody, but then the very next night, we had two of our officers out on I five conducting a DUI investigation when a vehicle traveling just at highway speeds totally smashed into their two patrol cars. And thankfully, they were able to jump out of the way along with the DUI suspect. So just those two incidents within just a matter of mere inches, we potentially could have lost three of our, our police officers in just a couple of days. So it's something that they realize every day when they show up to work, but it's part of their job and they're committed to providing that service to our community. So on behalf of our police officers, I thank you for your support and I thank you for the community support as well.
That I'll hand over to Councilor Pratt.
Hi, I just wanted to say during the last year, I, because of my role on the Tuolton Community Police Foundation, I have monthly contact with Chief Steel, so I have a little, maybe a little more awareness of what's going on periodically. And I, I've just been so impressed with our police department and it's been a really interesting year for them. And just all the things they've done and the flexibility they've had and their willingness to adapt to these changes. I know they're, they actually helped out when we had a protest, they, you know, they've been through, they did the police use of force web or Zoom meetings and we dealt with the SROs. And I know there's always a focus on de-escalation and I have to say like, there's always asking our, the foundation is trying to be part of the community and it's always asked to do things for the community, not for things for the police department. So I just want to commend them for, in addition to saving lives and being first responders, all the things they do. So with that, I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation declaring the week of May tenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-one is National Police Week in the city of Tuolton. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May tenth through fifteenth, twenty twenty-one to be dedicated as National Police Week and May fifteenth of each year to be a police memorial day in honor of the federal, state, municipal officers who have been killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas it is known on average that one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every fifty-four hours. Since the first known line of duty death in seventeen ninety-one, more than twenty-two thousand US law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas law enforcement officers, including Tuolton Police Officers, are guardians of life and property and defenders of the individual rights of freedom. And whereas the city of Tuolton is proud of our law enforcement officers and wish to recognize their commitment to the public safety profession. And whereas the Tuolton Police Department and officers provide the highest quality services and are committed to the highest professional standards working in partnership with our community to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safe environment and improving our quality of life. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city of Tuolton designates the week of May fifteenth to tenth to fifteenth, twenty twenty-one as Police Memorial Week in the city of Tuolton to call attention to Tuolton Police Office for the outstanding service they provided to our community. The city council also calls upon our residents and businesses to express their thanks to the men and women who make possible for us to leave our homes and families safe to each day and return to our homes, knowing they are protected by men and women willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard our loved ones, property and government against all who will violate the law. Introduced and adopted this tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Your Councilor Pratt. That Chief Steel, I mean, the proclamation says it all. We're eternally in the gratitude to our police department for the services they provide our community. We have a terrific police department. We heard that loud and clear from the community conversations. And the community supports your efforts and as does city council. And as you mentioned before, every day, these officers are putting their lives on the line. And that's a serious commitment to our community that never should be diminished. And those officers who've lost their lives this year, it's a tragic happening. And everyone, I shake my head and ask why. So I'm glad it's not happening here. I want to be sure it doesn't happen here. There are all our officers are safe every day.
Thank you again. I appreciate the support.
Right. All right. So next item up is our consent, I'm sorry, public comment. Public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the meeting, in the Zoom meeting or the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Do we have anyone in the poll center besides Clay Bates?
No, Mayor, it's only Clay, Megan and myself. However, I have not heard a response from anyone in the audience. If there's anyone who wishes to make public comment on the Zoom, can you please make yourself note?
Raise your hand, jump up and down so we can see you. I don't see anything of you. All right.
Looks like there's no public comment.
All right. All right. With that, now we'll move on to consent agenda. These items are considered routine. They will be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of four items. Item one, consideration for approval of the city work session and regular meeting minutes of April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Special work session meeting minutes of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. The city council work session and regular meeting minutes of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Item number two, consideration of resolution number five-five-four-one dash two-one. Authorizing the city manager to execute deed to acquiring property for the Martin Ozzy Avenue and Sagas Street Improvement Project. Item number three, consideration of resolution number five-five-four-two-dash-two-one. Authorizing new stop sign installations on Southwest Ninety-Fifth at Southwood Sagas Street near Tuolton Elementary School. And following item number four, consideration of resolution five-five-four-three-dash-two-one. Establishing school zones, modifying the school zone at Southwest Ninety-Fifth near Tuolton Elementary School and rescinding resolution number five-one-six-nine dash thirteen. Would anyone like any of these items removed from consent agenda tonight? All right. I don't see anyone making a motion, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent, for proof the consent agenda is read. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Councilor Pratt.
Aye.
Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Councilor Brooks.
Aye.
Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also. All right. So moving on to special reports, our first special report is from TBFNR, also known as Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue with their State of the District presentation. And there's Chief Weiss. Good evening, Chief Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for having me this evening. As you're probably aware, we do this annually. I, I come before you and hopefully, I think we missed last year, but hopefully in the years to come, we will continue to do so. I think I'm supposed to share my screen at this point, so cross your fingers that I get this right. How was that? Perfect, fantastic. So this evening, and thank you again for the time. This evening, we'll talk about the state of the district and it's kind of a variety of topics and I'll go through it in the interest of your time. And then if you have questions, I have all the time you need at the end to answer any questions you might have. So the first thing I wanted to recap, and it really is a recap, it's COVID-19 and what's happened with the fire district since COVID-19 became the pandemic that it is today. As you're aware, we shut down all of our buildings, all of our fire stations. And this is a picture of what you would see if you were to dial nine-one-one and call for emergency medical help. Unfortunately, we had to use different PPE to ensure that we could respond to the second, the third and the fourth calls. And so we apologize for if it caused some distress from people to see us respond like this. But again, we had to wear this PPE to respond in a safe manner. We stood up a COVID task force last year and the task force is still in place to help manage district operations, to make sure that we're doing everything to protect our employees as well as the citizens that we serve. We still have some people that wear these suits because they are easy to decontaminate once we go to a call. And sometimes you'll see the respirator as well. Most often, you'll see us in surgical masks. This is a picture of our old supply building. And the reason I have this picture in here is because when we were faced with the pandemic, we realized that the supply chain was going to be our biggest challenge. And how do we get personal protective equipment? Where does it come from? And I want you to know that Tiger and Tuolton School District was one of those partners that we had that was quick to respond and supply us with science goggles that our crews desperately needed. So what we did is we started to get more and more PPE from the area. And it was very humbling when you look to us as the first responder, we're prepared to be there in any emergency. And we actually had to reach out for help. We were humbled by the outpouring of support from private people, from private businesses, from Home Depots, from school districts. It really came from everywhere. And so we are so grateful and humbled that the community came together to support us like that. What you see here is kind of how we changed during COVID-19 and we love to get out in the communities. We love our outreach. We love to meet with cities, with neighborhoods. We love to go to parties. And with COVID-19, we were unable to do that. So we pivoted like a lot of people did. This picture right here is an example of a parade in a neighborhood for a birthday party. And so we started to get phone calls in and people asking, hey, can you come and drive by this birthday party? This retirement, this graduation ceremony. And we did really whatever we could to continue to be a part of the community. In February, we celebrated a cardiac arrest save that actually occurred in Wilsonville. But I point this out because you can actually go to our social media sites, whether it's Instagram or Facebook. And you can see the different videos that we've created during this year of challenging times. So hopefully you'll have an opportunity to do that. We're working with the city to support your annual citizens academy. And we're hoping everything gets to go through, depending on what the state does and what the restrictions are. So we're very hopeful and optimistic that we'll be able to get out in the community once again, like we did before in the other previous years. This is a picture of one of our newest captains, Gennaro Esparza. And the reason I have this video in here is because, as I just mentioned a second ago, what we're trying to do is reach out to our communities and help them understand what's going on, what we're doing in new ways, whether it's Zoom meetings like we're doing tonight or it's videos or it's social media. So we're trying to better connect with our communities virtually. And this is an example of things that we have again on our Facebook or online on our website where we're actually translating a lot of the information that we present in videos in Spanish and make sure that we can touch everyone in our communities through our outreach. I don't know if you recognize that, but that is our COVID vaccination pod down in Wilsonville. And Tuolton Fire and Rescue, early on when the vaccines became available, applied for the ability through Alert Two to actually give vaccines. We were one of the first fire departments, certainly the first in our area, that applied for that kind of certification through the state. So that when vaccines became available, we were able to stand up this pod and start delivering vaccinations. Now, our vaccination originally started at Station Fifty-Six, which is in North Wilsonville, south of Tuolton, depending on where you live. And it became too small. And once we actually vaccinated our firefighters, we had a lot of the general public coming through our fire station. We realized that it wasn't large enough to hold the response of the people to coming through. And it was still a working fire station that had to respond to calls. So we asked for some help with Clackamas Community College and the city of Wilsonville to keep us close to where our pod was at that north station, but give us a larger facility. This is a Clackamas Community College Satellite Facility in Wilsonville. We've been doing vaccinations there, not actually at that site, but we've been doing vaccinations since December. We transitioned to this campus as well as Nike, as well as a spot or two in Yamhill County. So Tuolton Fire and Rescue is actually have been giving vaccinations across three counties, Clackamas, Washington and Yamhill County. We continue to vaccinate today and I can tell you that we have delivered more than sixty-two thousand vaccinations at our locations, which, which is phenomenal. And I suspect after this week, that number will be up around seventy thousand. So we continue to do so. You may have read through social media or our website that we are winding down our vaccinations. And as you may or may not know, it seems as though the demand is less than the supply now, which our challenge all along was supply was hard to keep up with demand. But now it's kind of winding down. And so we're starting to give out the last of the first doses at this site. And this site is scheduled to be done with second doses mid, beginning of June. And then other agencies, pharmacies, doctors, they will continue to provide vaccinations as the public wants it. We certainly appreciate the support from our cities and our partners because what we realized very quickly is that we're a large organization, you're a large city, but we still need each other in times like these. And it takes us all to work together to be able to do things like this vaccination that we were able to do. So the wildfire season, I thought a pandemic would be enough, but then we had our absolute worst fire season that we've ever had within the boundaries of Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue in my time here, quite frankly, in the existence of the organization. We fought our largest wildfire on Shalilum Mountain Bald Peak. It was over eight hundred acres. And I'm happy to report that we were able to extinguish that fire without the loss of life, without the loss of houses, which is actually quite remarkable because this fire is something that certainly we, we prepare for. We have a lot of members that are wildland trained that go to other states and other parts of our state to fight wildland fire. But to have this in your backyard and all hands on deck with the topography that we had, with the wind event that we had, with all of the other fires going on across our district, there was a lot of hard work. There was a lot of help from the weather, I think at the end, and some help with topography that actually saw us through this. But we fully anticipate that this wildland fire season will be just as severe as the last. We provided extra training and we continue to provide extra training to our personnel. We're ensuring that our equipment and PPE is all ready to go. And I can tell you that since there's already been a significant wildfire in central Oregon, all of our wildland equipment is already on the engines. We're actually prepared today for another wildland fire. Beyond this fire in our district bounties, we also assisted with fires in Clackamas County. And we had some resources to send down to California. I believe that was in the Mendocino National Forest where we had firefighters fight fire down there and they all safely returned, I'm happy to report. This is a graph that I give you each and every year. And the one interesting fact about it this year that I wanted to point out is you'll notice the call volume actually went down. So the calls for service, how many times people within Tuolton called nine-one-one went down. And that's actually consistent with all of the other areas and cities that we serve. We're not entirely sure if it's because of the COVID, because of COVID pandemic, people were staying at home, less traffic accidents with I five and Tuolton Sherwood Road, certainly in the Tuolton area, there's a lot of car accidents. I think there was less people on the road, which might be a factor. We also think that there could be people that didn't call nine-one-one because they didn't want to go to a hospital. And maybe they just stayed at home rather than go and risk potentially being exposed to COVID-19. We don't know though for sure. So these are the trends. Your, your statistics are very much the same as, as they have been in the past. Your calls are during those peak times of the day, your calls are fairly equal each day of the week. And the only anomaly we saw this year would be that the calls went down for you as well as they did for everyone else. I can tell you, calls are back up like they were before. And so I suspect year twenty twenty-one, with the minor slowdown at the beginning of the year, will probably be the exact same as what we've had in years past for the, for the city of Tuolton. And on the right hand side, I don't know if you can see it or if it's covered by some of the boxes in Zoom, but it shows the stations that respond in the Tuolton area. As you can imagine, most of those calls were responded to by Station Thirty-four, which is off Tuolton Sherwood Road. But you have several other stations now that are right on the edges and they all contribute to managing the call volume and calls for service within the city of Tuolton. This is one of our capital improvement projects that we were very excited to finally complete. And I hope you know that this facility is in your city off Avery Street. This is our new logistics service center. And the picture I showed you before where there was PPE and there was a gentleman, you know, with the goggles and the mask, that was our old building, super small, no room to store everything. We were busting at the seams. So we were able to take our supply, which is essentially this room now that you see, our facilities and our fleet, put them all in one structure under one roof in Tuolton. The efficiencies gained were fantastic. We were able to make it seismically safe. And we have space finally where we can do the things that we need to do as the district grows. It's also a little more centrally located than the former building, which was out in Aloha, right at the edge of our district. So having it here in Tuolton is certainly going to create efficiencies. I have to thank city staff for helping us get this project done from beginning to end. Cause I'm sure you all understand, you try and do something, it's not always that easy. And, and there are plans and there's permits and there's things that need to be done. But we had the city's support from the beginning to the end, and we are so grateful that this building is finally complete. And we are operating out of it right now. I think we actually moved in around December, but it is up and running. So we're very happy about that. This building here is in Charbonneau. It's right off I five at Miley Road. And one of the things that we intended to do with our local option levy five years ago was site a fire station in that area. One of the other ones was citing the station in the Bridgeport area. But this was another one we've been trying to do for five years and it's very challenging to find property that we can use for a fire station. So once again, we made a little pivot and we found this building right on the exit or on ramp to I five northbound from Miley Road. It's a medical building and that center section that you see with the arch, that is going to be our new Station Fifty-four. It's similar in, in that we have a station in a strip mall type area in Raleigh Hills with the first one that we've done, the first one we've seen in this area of its kind. But it's been very effective to use that space to respond to the calls for service that we need. So this has been converted on the inside there in that center occupancy to a fire station. It will be a two-person rescue. We have a station captain that's responsible for it, Captain Gary Reed. He's already been in the area, working with the community to get to know them and understand their needs. We had a slight delay of the opening because of some mold remediation that was required on the exterior rear of the structure. But it is set to open in June and you can almost quote me on that. You never know, you know, right when we get to the very end, I'm thinking, ah, we got this. But cross my fingers, if nothing changes, we'll be able to move a rescue unit from the Wilsonville Station to this station and they will be up and running responding to calls. And then we will continue to look for a piece of land where we can do what you would think of as a more traditional fire station in that area someday. This is one of our firefighters and it's part of our recruitment. We actually held off hiring last year. We were able, some people stayed longer than we thought. We didn't have the attrition that we thought we may have. But after going through a year, year and a half of not hiring, now we have to hire. And so we have a major push for recruitment and finding people that want to come be firefighters and paramedics for Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue. We're recruiting currently for firefighter academy. We're also recruiting for a paramedic academy. And we actually divided those two out several years ago where we have opportunities for people that are paramedics or have become paramedics in our community to get a job with the fire department, work as a paramedic. And then after a few years, promote to a firefighter paramedic. So it's actually creates a chain for your growth, your personal growth, your career growth within the fire department. We're super excited to hold virtual informational meetings. We tried it last year. It wasn't too bad. So we did it again this year. We're just trying to get the message out. And I want everybody to understand that Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue, while it's a great organization, it's been around for a while. We want to be and are a very welcoming and inclusive organization. And so we look to continue to expand our outreach and attract new people to the fire service. If you haven't seen any of these profiles and you'd like to, if you go to any of our social media feeds, you can see some of these firefighter profiles as well. One of the most common questions we get at the front desk is, can I burn today? And we said, you know, we can create an efficiency there as well. Let's put something on our website that allows people to actually click where their house is. You can zoom in and click where your house is and it'll let you know whether or not you can burn on a particular day. I think there's certainly a push right now, informational push to make sure people understand when you can and can't. And even when you can burn, how you do it safely. And I certainly appreciate that. But this is a way where people can go in and they can click and find out whether or not it's a burn day for their house at their location. We also have one for the insurance services office rating. That's a common one we get from insurance companies is what's my rating for my house? And similarly, there's an interactive map where they can click on it and find out what your rating is for your house or your business or your structure. So we hope that makes things more efficient and helpful to the community that we serve when they reach and they ask these questions. And then finishing up, this year in November, Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue will be putting a bond on the ballot in November. And I think the most important part of this particular bond is that it's going to be a continue, it's not a continuation, but we have a different bond that drops off. So for the average taxpayer, the current rate right now for our bond is fourteen point one cents. It will stay the exact same if this is approved in November of this year. So timing was everything. We're super pleased with the timing and it will be on the November ballot. Some of the things that you'll see as part of that bond, first and foremost is the training center. And some of you are familiar with the training center. It's off Tonquin Road. It's been there for longer than I've been with the fire department. I'm not trying to date myself. I'm just saying it's been there a little while. And we know that it's had some improvements here and there, but it's not seismically safe. It needs a significant overhaul. And so actually that will be one of the primary pieces to our bond this year. As stations age and populations change, our stations have to be worked on, have to be fixed. And quite frankly, we need to make our stations that are welcoming to everyone. And we have some stations that actually require some remodeling, some that require some seismic improvements. But we want to make sure that we're able to adapt and expand as the service calls change and as the demographic change and as our workforce changes. So we're looking to do that with bond money, then land. And so previously, we purchased a few spots of land. We want to continue to do so and try to buy them proactively rather than wait for the developments to come up. The, and then it's harder to get a fire station into a particular area. So if we can look for where the land is available and fits into how we change our, our growth, then we will purchase that land. And then the last thing that'll be a part of this bond will be apparatus. And of course, we have a lot of apparatus and apparatus ages. And as it does so, we have to replace it. And so part of the funds will actually go to replacing apparatus, which will free up. which will free up some of our general fund to purchase other things in normal operation business day to day. That concludes the state of the district for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty, I think. Because I'm not sure I actually got to do one last year, but I will kick it off of share. Hopefully that worked too, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chief. Questions for the chief? Councilor Brooks?
I just want to thank you very much and especially for all the work during wildfires and raising awareness about our extended wildfire season, it seems. I had an invitation by, well, I did an invitation to the training facility for a program that's done for training women firefighters from Representative Graber before she was Representative Graber. And and I was just curious, as you're looking at your your increasing diversity and inclusion, how goals for females serving in the fire department are going and also in management?
So yeah, it has been a concerted effort for well over twelve years now. And with a larger organization with anything, it just takes time. And so we continue to do what we believe are the right things. And the girls' fire camp that you described, I saw an advertisement in one of the, one of the cities, I don't know if it was yours, but one of the city's paper actually advertised it because we are doing it again. It'll be a little different. Last year, we couldn't do it. But this year it's it's happening and we're excited about it. And when I get to see the picture of all the people that participated sitting on a truck, I'm just waiting for, okay, now when are you going to actually fill out an application? Come on in now. You've seen it. It's fantastic. Be a part of this organization. So we're doing, we're doing very well comparatively to other organizations similar in the same business, in the same field. We're doing very well. I'm encouraged, but it is absolutely part of my mission. I changed the fire chief's bullseye this year to include the word inclusion, which wasn't on it before. And if you know anything about TVFNR, that's our culture, is that bullseye? Now we have inclusion on it, and that's just an extension of what we've been doing and we will continue to do. So it's going well.
Thank you very much. And then can you remind me, how old are the girls that can apply? And and where do they go for the information? It was just incredible because, I mean, people should go check it out. I can't believe how high they climb up and all the exercises that they do. And they have a lot more courage than I do. And anyway, it was, it was pretty phenomenal day and pretty exciting that you all are doing that.
Yeah, it's it's my daughter's ages, so I'm hoping they're going to actually show up. That'd be nice, fifteen to twenty. And you know, I think that a lot of it is if you're not exposed to something, you don't really know what you can do. I'm totally convinced that you don't know what you can rise up to, what, you know, challenges you can manage until you're faced with them. And and so give them the opportunity. They can see what we do. They can see how we work. The mystery is gone. Lift the curtain. It's just a fantastic profession. And so I hope we fill out the the roster again this year. I think you can go to tvfr.com. And if not, I can make sure that Cassandra or Stefan gets the information out to the city so you can share the information.
Well, thank you so much again, and thanks for putting an inclusion on that bullseye.
Thank you.
Questions for the chief? All right. Not a question. That's it. It always amazes me every year you show us the stats for the calls that only two percent of the calls are for actual fires in Tuolton. Yeah, it's, you know, a huge majority is medical calls, but, you know, two percent of the calls was only a handful of structural fires. So it just amazed me for a fire department, only two percent is fires, but the EMT stuff keeps you, you know, hopping.
Yeah, and that's the shift in the fire service, right, is you shift to what is it that you're actually doing? And which we've done. So you see the cars in Tuolton, you see the rescues in Tuolton, and engines are there because we have to have them. But yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's almost, you know, this is this year, as Counselor Brooks just mentioned, a lot of your apparatus was used for fighting wildfires rather than residential or manufacturing industrial fires here in Tuolton, which is good. I mean, they're there and they're being used and they actively respond to any call.
Absolutely.
Anything else for the chief? Well, thank you for spending part of your evening with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate all of your help this past year as well.
All right. Have a good evening. All right. So next up, we have our first Metro update with our new counselor, Counselor Rosenthal. Welcome. How are you?
Thank you. I'm fine and quite a treat actually to get the update on TVFNR. My street has contributed to some of their fires. I've had two major fires over the years right next to me, and they work great. So I'm really a supporter. So thank you, Chief Weiss. It was great.
Well, welcome, and I look forward to your presentation. Yeah, do you have, for those who haven't met Counselor Rosenthal yet, he's our new counselor for our region of Metro. And he's coming here picking up the ball from the previous counselor who used to give us quarterly updates on what was going on with with Metro.
I appreciate it. Thanks for having me. I'll try not to take too much time. I think you probably, many of you know a lot of the stuff that Metro does. Do you have a slideshow that we can work through? Ah, there we go. Yes, Metro Update. All right. As you know, District Three includes your neighbor cities of Wilsonville, Sherwood, Durham, also King City, Tigard, the southern half of Beaverton, and a piece of Hillsborough. So it's a pretty big district. Metro is a big district. So I wanted to give you, there's been a lot of things going on in Metro, and so we can go to the next slide. What does Metro do? Well, I think a lot of you know some of what it does. We do long range planning. We do transportation, affordable housing, parks and nature, garbage recycling, visitor venues. We also do pioneer cemeteries, and we do a lot of nature protection. So I will get into the details. Long range planning is generally considered to be both the urban growth boundary as well as transportation with the regional transportation planning or agency. So, you know, we get distributed and you're familiar with the transportation. It's through the the flexible funds and through getting grants for particular projects and allocating federal, you know, federal dollars in ways that suit of, that are good for everybody in the district and provides a regional one. We also do emergency, emergency routes and things like that. The affordable housing, that was the bond issue passed in two thousand eighteen. Parks and Nature was passed in, I was getting confused, without two thousand nineteen, excuse me. And then garbage and recycling, you know, we manage the garbage and recycling. And we have a lot of contract collectors, which the cities collect or contract with, and then we manage a couple of stations ourselves and set some rules and regulations and try and some consistency and promote reuse and recycling. And then now a new one is the supportive housing services, which was passed this last spring, about a year ago, and I'll get to that in a little more detail. And then, of course, the visitor venues, and I'll get to that, but there's, there's five of them. Well, there's the zoo, there's the Merc, which is the exhibition center. There's the convention center, and then there's the performance venues. But let's the next one, please. So the long range planning, that's really the urban growth boundary, expanding it where necessary. As you know, a few years ago, we came up with a plan for urban reserves and rural reserves. Right now, we're still building out. There's, there's still a fair amount of acreage left inside the urban reserves. But, you know, we try and respond as necessary to the individual cities. It's been a, I've only been on since January, but it's been a bit of a chaotic year. And I know some of the cities have had some difficulty getting, you know, public involvement and getting feedback just because of COVID. So, you know, Metro is trying to be flexible on that. The transportation plan, as I mentioned, we work with ODOT on pollution reduction. The regional transportation plan. We're also working very much on a congestion pricing study, which we're working with ODOT to try and I'd say expand ODOT's focus that they were given from the legislature about tolling to really talk about it as congestion pricing. And that's, the first results are coming in. Well, I should say the study is getting to be completed. I've heard some preliminary reports, but it hasn't been released yet. So I can't go into details because I haven't heard them myself. The emergency transportation routes, we're just approving the emergency transportation routes. And those are the routes that are key for emergency responders to use when there is an emergency. That's, it's different than you might say evacuation routes, which hopefully we never have to designate, but that's a different, that's a different case. And then we're also working with ODOT to deal with mobility. So you can go to the next one. All right, the affordable housing bond. As you know, that in two thousand eighteen, we passed the Affordable Housing Bond. The good news there is that we've allocated or we've committed thirty four percent of the money, but we have approximately fifty percent of the units that we have projected. Now, it's a little early to say that that'll hold up because, as you know, lumber prices and construction prices, it's getting harder to get things built. But signs are good. There is, you know, there are three in my district. One is in Tigard, one is in Beaverton, and there is one, where there's one in Wilsonville, and there's a planned project in Tuolton as well. So these are going to be units. A lot of them are going to be single person units, but a lot of them are also going to be family units. You know, like a couple of bedrooms and a much larger sort of situation. There are specific requirements for these. There's going to be, hopefully, we'll be able to house about twelve thousand people in this process, and that's in multiple family units as well. So let's see, seven hundred of those have been already funded. And those are for families who earn incomes lower than twenty six thousand. And my understanding is that about now, or maybe the first of June, the first one in Beaverton, just near the library, people will be moving into that one. But they're distributed across the entire region, not just in my district, but they're distributed. But District Three seems to have been a little bit more proactive in getting these units than others. Next one, please. Supportive Housing Services. You'll remember this came out as a, as a tax measure in two thousand two thousand twenty. This was a sort of came in just as COVID was locking everything down. And this is a measure to provide supporting housing services. It's sort of the second half of, so you get housing and you get people in housing, but you also have to provide services. So a lot of these people may have some substance problems. They may have some behavioral problems. They may have some legal problems. So keeping them in houses is one of the best ways to do that, but you have to have the housing to put them in. So the supportive housing thing is going to kick off particularly in July. The taxation plan, which taxes people with higher incomes and businesses with a great deal of revenue. It's about, I think it's a one percent, but I haven't looked at it lately. We have, each county is developing its own implementation plan called a LIP, called a local implementation plan, I guess it's called. Yeah, local. Although it's actually county implementation plan, so it could be SIP, but anyway, not my choice. Multnomah Counties has been approved, and Washington Counties will be approved probably next week. Clackamas Counties is in the works. Now, these are really frameworks. The heavy lifting is still to come by staff on the counties as well as, you know, of course, there's going to be a lot of involvement with the housing districts in the cities that have them. So there's a lot of work to be done. And Metro is going to ride herd. There's a tri-county commission that's also going to be very involved in making sure the money gets spent wisely and that we actually get the production. Washington County has, and I don't remember the numbers. I've read the plan. It's reductions of some, you know, fifteen hundred people that wants to get houses and get away from the need for additional services. So they have specific numerical goals in their plans for how this is going to all roll out. And hopefully, more will happen in the first couple of years, and then it'll try and be cleaned up. The goal is what you might call functional, functional home occupancy for at least the people who are the chronically housed. Seventy five percent of the money will go to the people that are unhoused and have other existing or difficult conditions. Twenty five percent of the money will go to people who are in danger of being housed in the form of vouchers and things like that. So it's a mixed kind of program. So that's a big deal. And, you know, I'm trying to make sure that it happens and happens correctly, but, you know, I'm new there. So I, they don't listen to me too much. Anyhow, support, move on to the next one, Parks and Nature. Now, this is a Clackamas, and it's Christine Lewis's district. But nonetheless, the Parks and Nature passed in two thousand eighteen. We've already protected more than seventeen thousand acres of open space. Places like Cooper Mountain or Renko Woods, Killen Wetlands, also Graham Woods down in Wilsonville. And there's still money in the bond issue to purchase more areas. A new one that's just opened is Newell Creek in Oregon City. The twelve hundred fifty acre Shehalim Ridge Nature Park is near Forest Grove. That's a new one. I have, my goal is to get to all these parks, but I haven't been to all of them yet. So it's going to take me a while. Unfortunately, the weather is getting nicer. So that's, that's good. If you have any questions, there's, you know, I don't know all the opportunities in this area. The Parks, Parks has been very good about finding lands and sort of snapping them up while they still can. Next one, please. Garbage and recycling, everybody's favorite topic, garbage and recycling. It's getting rid of the waste that we all generate. As you know, we manage the regional plan, and I live down in the the Republic District. And I guess that's Tuolton is in Republic, Sherwood is in the Pride area. But anyway, some of the things that we're doing is we're trying to improve recycling and make better capacity for that. There is planning in the works for some sort of facility on the west side out in Cornelius, which, which the details of it will not be known. There's going to be, there's talk and planning for expansion of some of the services at the South Station. I think a lot of us know South Station. It's been literally overwhelmed during this COVID time. Been very hard on staff because they have to be there. They have to be processing the garbage. People come in their cars, but it's been, as we all know, everybody's had more time to go in their cars. One of the big things that we're going to expand is, as you may have read in the papers, we had the RID program, which deals with illegal dumping on public lands. A lot of this, a lot of the waste and trash that you see around some of the camping sites, a lot of that is, I mean, some of that's related to camping sites, but a lot of it's related to people who illegally take trash and dump it there because they figure nobody will catch them. So we're responsible for picking that up. As you know, I'm, this is the last year we were using people from the, basically incarcerated people. But there were problems both with COVID as well as some public perceptions of this problem. And so that program is no longer there. We are going to be expanding this, tripling the size of this RID program. Because as you know, Portland has a real waste problem, I mean, at least perceptionally, but also really. And we have to get a lot of this stuff cleaned up because we'd like having a clean environment. It's not so much of a problem out here in Wilsonville, Sherwood, Tuolton, Durham. But there's a lot of places in the county where it is a problem. So we're going to triple that. And one of the plans is to hire a lot of the people from the homeless communities, train them up because it's, it can be a hazardous job. You have, you have sharps, you have, you know, all sorts of stuff out there. So you have to train them up and give them PPE. So that's something that we're going to be booming up. Next one, please. Expo and Convention Center. As you know, the Expo Center hosted the Red Cross staging during the wildfires. We got a lot of people parked their RVs out there and some of the animals. The Convention Center was an emergency shelter for fire evacuaries as well. Both Expo and COVID have hosted COVID nineteen testing. And the Convention Center has been hosting, now it's winding down. But at its peak, it was considered to be perhaps the most efficient vaccination station in the country. So they did, you know, I don't know, five hundred thousand or so. So they've been very, very good and very efficient. And Metro, it's Metro's facility, and Metro made it possible, but the big kudos have to go to the hospitals, to OHSU, to Providence, to Kaiser and Good Sam, I guess, for getting it together and having people there and getting it done. So anyway, that's sort of what we do on Expo and Convention Center. We're hoping, no, I won't get into the, I want to get into the P five and the other ones, but first the zoo. Next one, please. We're winding down. It's about a twelve year bond issue for the zoo. That's going to, that has enhanced a lot of the facilities, particularly the Rhino House, the Primate House, and the Polar Express visit. We got Nora Beck, the polar bear. And for those of you who wonder why she's there by herself is because for physically health reasons, she was unable to be in a reproductive program anywhere else. And so her partner at Salt Lake left, and so she came back here and we're looking for a partner. But polar bears are sort of solitary. I think in this case she would, and she likes people. But polar bears are sort of solitary. I think in this case she would, and she likes people, so, but we can't put a person in there, of course. That would be probably not a good idea. At any rate, so the zoo had a great that, I don't know if many of you went to the lights. Apparently that was a very good phenomenon. People liked hot chocolate and sitting in their cars and looking at the lights. That was one of the things that helped save, I wouldn't say save the zoo, but certainly made it much more economically viable during the COVID crisis. It's sort of partially open back now. Nora's back. The Polar Express is there. I would advise you to go. It's really quite lovely. We're hoping to get more rhinos and primates in. They've been, the shipments have been delayed due to COVID, so that this should be a grand reopening sometime in the fall, so keep track of that. As you also know, the conservation is a big issue. We're, we're doing a national search for a new zoo director. So, but conservation is going to remain there. As you know, California Condors are one of the big breeding programs that we do. It's at some site in Clackamas County that, you know, they won't tell me where it is and I can't tell you where it is. It's, it's a secret site. So moving right, next slide, please. Culturally, one of the most important things is the Center for the Performing Arts. As you know, we, I mean, we have five concert halls, Schnitzer, Keller, Newbar, Brunish and Winningstead. Most of our layoffs have happened in these because obviously we haven't been running them. We're, we're waiting for the state to give us guidance on how we can open them and what levels. But as you can imagine, like the Schnitz and things like that, you can't open them at twenty-five percent capacity. It just takes too much staff and preparation and heating and, you know, and all that other stuff to get it going. So we're waiting for things to die down a little bit so we can open them and we can bring people back. We want to bring all the people back that we can, that, that were laid off. And, and get these things open because people, once we open, I think people are going to be coming to the theater because people are going to want to see, see shows. So we're, we're eligible, we hopefully are eligible for the shuttered venues grants from the American Recovery Act, so we get some help from the federal government. But, you know, we're, we're working on it. Staff has been doing a great job just trying to keep things running. Keep things, you know, warm and cozy inside and so that we can open them when, as soon as we can in a very safe manner. Next one, please, and this is second to the last one. We're trying to build an equitable economic development. We think that the economy is going to come back and we want to make sure that it comes back. So we're investing in working families, support for vulnerable businesses, ensuring justice and dignity for workers. And we hope the economy recover. One of the things we partner with is the, well, with Greater Portland Inc. We're developing a five-year plan, not a twenty-year plan. Normally we'd be doing a twenty-year plan. But because of the COVID crisis, we're doing a five-year plan with Greater Portland Inc. on how we can reopen things and how we can re-stimulate the business. Now, the other thing is the Construction Careers Pathways Program will help ensure access for the trades for people who have been underrepresented. And equity is a big, is a big lens that we look at everything through to make sure that everybody, you know, everybody, particularly people who have been disadvantaged. Whether it's handicapped or people of color or people who've been economically disadvantaged, just have opportunities to do jobs and opportunities for pathways for success. And so that's something that we're working for as much as we can. And I, you know, I've got to say, obviously, we didn't pass the transportation measure last fall and there were some problems with that. I think that that could be, if, if we can find a way to do that, if the economy recovers and, and and if the cities and the people, you know, provided some of the guidance and wanted to happen, I think that would be a way that we could also generate a lot of jobs and a lot of economic recovery. But that depends on the will of the people. It's not just something that we can, that we want to push on people. Anyway, that's basically it. It's a lot of, in a nutshell, I'm available through Metro. I've helped you with, you know, I can comment or get you resources and information. I'd be happy to hear any questions or anything else you want to know.
Thank you. Questions for Councilor Rosenthal. Valerie has her hand right up. Councilor Pratt.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming and updating us. I do have a few questions. My first one is, where does Metro see its role in the overall metro community? Are you, you see yourself more as a, I guess, pulling projects together and then like say, transportation, then once the local communities identify it, do you feel like Metro's role is to once basic guidelines are met, do you feel like your role is to step in with a real detailed level of guidance? Or more of a kind of home rule philosophy where the local community can do its best for?
Are you talking about transportation specifically or all programs?
All programs.
Okay, well, my personal view is that it's, we don't, we shouldn't get in, involved between the people and their communities. Every community has its own particular culture, its own particular needs, its economies and so forth. The role of Metro, as I see it, is to set reasonable standards so that unnecessary competition or collisions between cities doesn't happen so that, you know, so that Sherwood doesn't build a road that doesn't connect with Wilsonville, you know. So everybody's building a road so that the emergency vehicles have, have through pathways. And the same thing too with housing. I mean, we, we, we're not an implementer of building the houses. We contract with the housing authorities and we said, here are some guidelines and the guidelines should be not identical, but similar. Reflect local needs, but be similar throughout the region so that one group isn't getting a much easier pass. You know, they can build stuff that's really cheap, whereas another region is forced to build stuff that's, you know, has more seismic, seismically resistant, just for an example. So I don't see us as a fine-tuned agency that gets into the planning. When we, with parks, again, you know, we work with the park districts, all the park districts wherever possible. But we generally will be buying lands that are outside of what the park districts can do. And then saying to the park district, whether it's Tuallaton or Wilsonville, this is a good park. Do you want to, do we want to have a share? Do you want to take over? We bought it because it's a resource and it's hard for cities sometimes to, to reach outside of their boundaries and, and speculate on this. And we have the bond issue that allows us to do that. So, and garbage is the same way. One of the things is multiple family housing was to get so that they all have sort of similar collection devices. So, you know, so everybody moves from one realm to another. It's not like, all right, now you got to store it in the brown bin. You know, previously you stored it in the green bin. Oops, that didn't work. So it's make sure that there's some consistency, not uniformity. Not, you know, lockstep, but just so that everybody has their flexibility.
Okay, well, you mentioned parks, so now's my real question. With the, you know, from the Parks Fund, there's a local share grant program.
Right.
And we have, we have a park here that there was a significant amount of outreach. It's in one of our lowest income areas. And it's been designed, but from my understanding, there's equity inclusion, climate resiliency and meaningful engagement that must be included to get this money from Metro. And from when I'm seeing this is virtually impossible, like this one has a basketball court and a playground. And that's what our, that's what the community wanted. And, and then like where I live, there's a ten acre, it's a nature park. And it could use funding for, you know, removing evasives and stuff, and it's not going to meet the equity inclusion factor. So I just wish you, I wonder if you could speak to that. And it just seems like it's virtually impossible to get the funding for our parks from this.
Well.
Program.
I've had this discussion with your mayor and there's a couple of things, and some of it has to do with some, my opinion is, is in some sense not relevant because it bases on the bond issue. The bond issue was passed is for parks, parks and nature. And it was the focus of the bond and the way it was written and the legal interpretation. It is, that it really is focused on clean water, trails, outdoor recreation and nature education. I guess the easiest way to say it, it's considered, and you know, this is legal interpretations by people who wrote the bond and who have implemented it. Is that it's a Parks and Nature bond, but it's not a Parks and Recreation bond. In other words, and there's some practical reasons. I mean, I, I personally think a basketball court in this park and there's a, you know, Hillsboro would like I guess it's Hillsboro would like to have a pinata place. So every, every area would like to have a thing that's specialized for its, its particular, you know, its particular ethnic groups. But those are expensive and if we, if we start funding recreation sites, it's very hard to draw a line. So it's not me, but it, the Metro, Metro Parks people and particularly their legal advice has said it, it has to have some relationship to nature. Now, there is an issue of whether things can be matched, whether there might be special exemptions at the whole end of the project. If there's still some monies left to allocate, these would have to be special case situations. And, you know, I, I can't, you know, tell you whether they, whether they would go, you know. There's another big park issue that's coming up, which has to do with cleaning up hazardous waste along the Portland, along the Portland Harbor area, which is called Willamette Cove. So, I mean, we might say we want to build nice things in Tuallaton and Sherwood and Wilsonville. And then people in Portland would say, we want to spend all that money on cleaning up hazardous waste at Willamette Cove. Those problems can be difficult. Hopefully we can work them out.
And I guess since you just brought that up, is that when you look at how these funds are allocated, do you look at allocating them across the whole metro area or does Portland get a bigger say, well, just because of population? But are you looking at like putting things in Hillsborough and Tuallaton and Portland or just more in the Portland area?
Well, no, actually, I mean, there are neighborhoods, neighborhoods in Portland where there actually are, are park deserts and they should have some more parks, particularly in Portland. And, but that's really, I mean, in, in that case, we have to take, the lead has to really come from Portland Parks. And Portland Parks has to say, here's a property. Metro primarily deals with areas that are outside of cities and park districts. We look at regional resource like Cooper Mountain, like Newell Creek, like Graham Oaks, which we bought from a farm. If you read the signs there, it was like, and I don't know the details, but it was like much too expensive for Wilsonville to buy. So, but it was at the boundaries of Wilsonville, so, you know, sort of out of their jurisdiction. So Metro primarily will buy things out in the region. I would like to see, for example, Metro buy some areas over in the, in the Stafford area, you know, and things over in the, in the Tuallaton area that between the Tuallaton and West Lynn. I think there's some lands there that are potential, you know, the whole, you know, anyway. My personal views are, are a small part of the mix. This is, this is Park Staff and, and I don't know all the criteria they use. One of the criterias they use is where can we get a really valuable piece of natural property or rehabilitable, rehabilitatable natural property for a good price? And that's part of the deal so that we can, I mean, they're looking, they're looking ahead twenty years in the future, which if the area grows, these things will become handy. So that's a partial answer.
No, that, that's fine. Thank you and thank you for that suggestion of Stafford. I hope you keep repeating that one.
Councilor Brooks.
Thank you for the update and welcome to the city. And congratulations on your election. I, I had two things that came up. I worked on the LIP Committee for Washington County and just going back to Council Pratt's comment around control and all that stuff. I was proud to talk about the housing bond in our area and Metro and being able to lift that at the National League of Cities format because we were able to lift more money through doing it regionally than we could have through individual counties. And that, doing it through the metro, and that was something that a lot of leadership was, has been watching from around the country and to see how well we do at implementing it. So, so I'm really proud of both of those things of doing that regional lift through metro and also working as one of the many, many voices on the local implementation planning for the county. And so I wanted to thank the Metro Council for all that work on there and also for the beginning funding of our first project here in Basalt Creek. And look forward to, to really, you know, doing a successful program. So thanks for your interest and your attention to that. And, and then I want to also say.
I just have to comment. I deserve almost no credit for that because this was all done. I, I'm very supportive of it and I want to make sure that it happens correctly and quickly. But it's the other, it's the existing counselors that deserve it, including, I would say, you know, former counselor Dixon.
Yes, no, absolutely. And what you said was also well-heard that you're interested in good outcome measures. Because really, you know, we have a lot of eyes on us and we want to do this really well. And plus, people with the limitations of what we can do with law enforcement around COVID, having so many more homeless. It's not that they just showed up, but there's more visibility around the homeless issue in Portland. That, you know, I think people are becoming more aware and, you know, and it's something that I don't think any of us feel proud about to have this home, this amount of people in the wealthiest country in the world living on the street. And so I appreciate that you're going to be diligent around this. Also, when you were talking about parks, I too don't really like the fact that we have to thread the needle in a way that doesn't seem to work. However, going on to a different topic, I remember going to tour the connectors that's going to be happening for the bike path and that goes out sort of through our area and then out connecting past the Nat, National Reserve Preserve out to Beaverton.
You mean the Tonkin Trail?
Yeah, the Tonkin Trail. And, and then I have curiosity around not only Stafford, but the Basalt Creek area. If there's opportunities for us for, for what it's, the purpose is, which is the nat, natural areas. And then tying into it, my curiosity is also if you have these wide open spaces that are not as concentrated and maybe not as much equity there. How do we, I don't understand that side of it. So if we're going to do it, the national, the national areas and the way that you're talking about with going into unincorporated areas, how does this, how do we, I just don't understand that, from that direction? Equity, the equity piece.
Well, the equity piece, it, that, it's a little bit more difficult and a little bit more obtuse in that regard. Yeah, because some of these trails in the outer areas are, do not serve as much of an equity purpose. But they do, they can serve a community time purpose and they can provide recreation. I mean, we work with park districts, for example, on building a, an overpass, a pedestrian and bikeway. Some of them will serve transportation functions. The, the one that we've worked with, Tuallon Hills Park and Rex is over at Highway twenty-six. Oh, about a hundred and seventieth or something like that. All right, this is, this will be used by commuters. Does it really serve a lot of equity? Well, some, it's not, you know, because there are some low, low income neighborhoods there. It'll allow them to commute to work whether they're, you know, over at Nike or whatever, through a bikeway, pedestrian way. Wilsonville wants to build a bridge over the Willamette River, which is a nice idea for a bikeway, but will it really do much for equity? That's a question. Parks is probably the one area we're working, that Metro is working on, that has this bond. That, again, because of the way the bond was structured back then, is probably less focused on, on equity than other things. It's really focused on long-range livability more than equity. But I agree with you, equity needs to be an important part. You know, we, we managed the end of your golf course. Would equities be better served by making that into a regional park? I don't know. That's, that's an issue that's been brought up. Again, supporting things, I mean, equity is, is well-served by improving the, the Willamette Cove and making that accessible to everybody. Because it's in a, in a core area, so. But it's harder, it's harder to deal with it, with this bond issue because it wasn't specifically focused. The Supportive Housing Services as equity is one of its major focuses. But the bond issue apparently did not quite see that far ahead. So I'm, I'm sorry, that's, that's the best answer. I can give a lot of these things, you know, I didn't write them.
No, no, but it's very helpful to understand because I start getting confused. And then I'm just curious if there are any things in your sights that we can be looking at upcoming for parks in our area? That was my final question.
Well, if, if you can get an idea that has, you know, good open space and is, also has some benefits for equity. Unless it, except that it has sports facilities, which right now, I mean, that may, we may be able to get around that at some point in the future. But right now, I think it's something that, that we're open to. You know, I would point out that the, and one of my concerns has been the housing bond, although it's a very good idea. It probably didn't stress equity as much. It probably didn't stress equity as much as in in moving things into housing deserts. I'm concerned that we we don't want to build uh, affordable housing in areas that are transportation parks and and service deserts. So there there are some issues that weren't fully addressed in the housing bond. I mean, it's a great thing. Don't get me wrong. And we needed it, but it didn't, you know, sometimes people don't think of everything at the same time.
Thank you.
Council Reyes.
Um, thank you, Councilor Rosenthal for the presentation. It was really um, informative. Um, I I want to address the equity part again, and I think because we're trying to understand. Um, and if I recall correctly, some of the uh, language that was in the parks for the bond was um, DEI. And for me, that's equity. So um, if you're like, um, there's there, the equity in the parts, what what does that look like to some people is, and I know you're, you've mentioned nature and and um, re- not so much the recreation, but for me, I'm thinking of the the parts in our community that are being looked at from the communities that people that live in those communities in those apartment buildings and and trying to 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 renovate something that suits their needs. And it may not be some nature walk, or it may not be uh, some, some just uh, things that we can admire or get inspired because that that demographic that enjoy those kinds of um, nature walks and inspiration to see um, all these like green, green scapes are not necessarily uh, the the new um, immigrant community that have little ones still, they have little kids, they have, they're twenty years old, but they have little kids. So they need areas where they can have their kids go and play. So they can, so the they might not see as a park like the way we see it. We see it as a, you know, in a sense like, okay, I'm gonna go walk at the park. They really wanna recreate, they want to take their kids to do all that, those activities that once upon a time, those that are enjoying nature enjoy when they were kids. So um, I think that that really confused the community because it confused me. As someone who reads English and uh, when I'm sign and when I'm voting and I'm thinking, oh, great, the the DEI is involved. Then for me, that means it's going to be some kind of equity, including parts that are for uh, communities that have a I mean, by the time they enjoy nature and walks will probably be twenty, thirty years from now. And so um, I'm just, I'm just appalled that I felt like I was a little bit not deceived, but because nobody really cared to look at it carefully. I mean, that really, I don't know, it makes, I I mean, I don't know if you want to explain that a little bit more because DEI does stand for equity. And for me, there's, there's some something that I mean, a a technicality kind of makes me feel a little uneasy right now.
Well, you know, first of all, I want to say, I think Tuol- from what I've read about the the parks plan, this particular park was, it's it's actually pretty close to me. Is had done a great job in outreach to the community and also in identifying what the needs of the community are in terms of the things that the people want. And they want something that's going to be, you know, a basketball court, for example. They also have open space for some of that, a lot of that is actually eligible for for the local share funding, you know, whether it's the, you know, the storm water control basin, I believe, is part of the nature park, the open space picnic ground, the area for picnicking and things like that. You're right. I agree with you in principle. I mean, I wish if if they had written the bond and said, we're going to buy these, we're going to do parks and nature and water quality improvement and with a focus on on equity and community needs. The bond issue would be different. But like I said, I'm I'm coming in here and and this is, I I realize that this is a controversy and it doesn't quite meet what the desires or the needs of the community are. But let's just say they didn't have the foresight when they wrote the bond issue and they feel legally constrained by the wording because, I mean, the bond issue is a legal contract with the public. So when you have, when you have that, and again, I'm not an attorney, so their interpretation has been it constrains them from spending it on things like soccer fields or baseball diamonds, or in this case, a basketball court.
Or swings and you know, just picnic areas where they can sit and have lunch and enjoy. I I don't know, for me, I felt like, and I'm not blaming you or anything like that, I just felt a little, now that I'm listening to it, it makes me very upset. It's just I felt like, whoa, I thought I saw the I, the DEI component there where that includes communities that need not necessarily a nature walk, but they need something that they can go to and and play and and it's not always, because that's not what they're thinking at right now in their, in their life. Maybe that will be thirty years from now when they retire and they can go and walk on a nature, do a nature walk.
Right, right.
So I, it's really uneasy to be to learn to know that I'm hearing um, the actual bond and I, I don't know, it just, it's disappointing. I think that's the word.
I I I understand and I'm very sympathetic to the position and and I've, as I've said, I at this point in time, and it's possible at some point to come back and say, all right, let's have a special vote to do this. Uh, I I I'm not sure how the council would respond to that. Um, you know, it's awesome. And they, and and the legal, the legal people might say you can't do it. You you can be sued by, I don't know, you could be sued by Troutdale for uh, for not funding their their soccer fields or something. I don't know. Uh, but I I understand the disappointment and I understand that, like I said, Tuol went to a great deal of efforts to do DEI. The um, and uh, to make sure this is what the community wanted. Uh, I'll continue to help look for ways to get around this. But again, you know, I've only been there a couple of months and then I I I don't have much clout at this point in time, to be very honest.
Well, thank you. But um, yeah, I I do wish that this conversation should continue, like will continue and at least has, I don't know, I know there's a contract out there, but some kind of amendment or something that or bring it back to the voters or I don't know. I mean, I don't know what can be done. I just felt very disappointed to hear that and learn that.
I will continue to work with your mayor to uh, to to see if there's some way to resolve this in in a in a better manner.
Thank you.
Other questions for the counselor? Just getting peppered pretty good here tonight. Well, uh, if no one else has, I'm gonna file, I'll finish up the firing squad here, Garrett, for you. I got three questions. Uh, one, uh, I'm gonna leverage off of Council Reyes that, you know, the, what has tinged me a little bit now is that any metro bond measure, I'm gonna have to read big time in the voter's pamphlet because now um, if they're gonna play legal games on what's including, what's not based on an assumption of how the metro bond worked before. Now I'm gonna have to really read anything metro puts out as a bond measure um, the finer details, which is not what most people are gonna do. And hindsight here, um, you just talked about the transportation measure, measure. Holy crap, would I really have to look at the details of Metro's bond measure for transportation package? Because where I'm gonna assume a road's gonna get built with this money, all of a sudden Metro says, no, that wasn't included. That's not what the intent is. That's not the legal thing. I know this is not you, Councilor Rosenthal, but um, the mayors are talking about, you know, how are we gonna look at bond measures again? Coming from Metro, how much do we have to read the nitty gritty of that bond proposal on the ballot? Go ahead. Yeah, I know you weren't there. This is Council Dirksen and you're taking the shots for it, but I apologize.
No, you're, you're correct. Like, as I said, a a bond issue is essentially a legal contract between the governing agency and the people. And it's like all contracts, gotta read the fine print.
Yep, all right. Uh, go, those cleanup crews where it's being transitioned from inmates uh, to paid employees, where's the funding coming for for that?
Uh, they're they're reallocating some other funds from the general fund, I believe. I'd have to check into that. But it's not, um, yeah, it's it's part of the budget, it's part of the budget process. They're reallocating money from other general funds into it. And I forget exactly where the 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 location is coming from, but it's not coming from service fees.
All right. Um, speaking of service fees, nice segue. Uh, considering I'm looking at Mr. Jordan's face here, well, his picture of him for Public Services and he's coming up uh, later tonight. I know uh, Metro deferred the tilt fee increase because of a loud uh, cry, if you will, from the region's leaders about not doing an increase mid uh, budget year. I know it's back on your agenda on July. Uh, where where are you at with that?
Well, July is when they normally do a fee, a fee adjustment. Of course, some of it's going to be dependent upon the waste loads. I mean, so there will be a fee adjustment and it's probably gonna go up. I have not been briefed yet on how much it's gonna go up. My, I I think what I heard back in December or January was something on the order of six dollars. One of the problems, of course, is a lot of the haulage has been uh, individual hauls. That's been a big jump and that's a, that's a very expensive thing to take all the individual people hauling our, digging our trucks there with, filled with stuff from our our yard and and so forth. So my guess is it's gonna go up. I don't know how much.
Okay. And they're still talking about a July and then another one mid-year or is this gonna be one for the fiscal year?
They're talking about July. Um, I have not heard any discussion about another mid-year one, but again, we've been talking about other things recently. I mean, we're talking about um, making it a little easier to contract with the facilities to take compostable waste outside of the ones we have right now and they're upgrading the facility down at the South Station so that can handle a more, a a different and a bigger waste stream. And then, of course, you know about the the West Facility and you have your own concerns and the mayors here have their concerns about that. So they've been working about that and uh, trying to just to figure out this this uh, this rid thing, getting rid of illegal dumping and taking care of that. So those are the, been the main things. There's a, there's something else that they've been, that we've been working on and I can't, it just escapes me, but so I don't know if there's one coming up later, that there is one coming up in July and I haven't been briefed on what they're estimating at this point.
All right. Um, I'm looking forward to that conversation because uh, as is all the mayor, all all the mayors are, especially with us, with our budgets, you know, cycles coming up. And with our garbage haulers coming and asking for rate increases, we don't want to have to do two uh, rate increases. And so I appreciate your work with us and I appreciate you taking my calls, my emails. You've been very patient. Uh, as counselors know, I've beat you up about this parks thing too. But you've been always nice about it and, you know, I appreciate you listening. That's the biggest part of the job is listening and taking the message back. And I appreciate that you're doing that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your being very candid about the your concerns and problems. I mean, you know, that I have no desire to hide things from anybody and 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 so understanding, as I said, each city has its own different concerns and specific needs and trying to match them all together sometimes takes a little bit of, a little bit of work.
All right. Any other questions for Council Rosenthal? Well, again, I appreciate you taking time out tonight uh, and you coming to us and I look forward to your next presentation, hopefully next quarter.
Okay. All right. Thank you all very much. Uh, nice, nice seeing you all. I wish sometime to meet you, to get to see you all in person.
Yep.
A couple of you I know in person, but all right, thank you very much.
Take care. All right. So item number three in Special Reports is the Tuolton City Service Building Update. I believe Clay's been waiting patiently in the pole center.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to come and talk about Sid Tuolton City Services. Um, tonight I'd like to go over the uh, project, review the concept of some of the benefits, like to review the timeline, some of the challenges. Also naturally budget, how much does it cost us? Um, touch base about the city offices, where we're at with that. And then also at the end, talk about communications. I'm turning that over to Megan George because she's been outstanding and very helpful in the project. More than maybe anybody realized or more she gives herself credit for. Um, with that, the the concept back in twenty twenty eighteen now fall, that seems like a long, I think a lifetime ago and this yesterday as well. Um, we talked about uh, the concept and what happened if we completed the uh, Operations Master Plan. And uh, yeah, if you want to go ahead and pull that up and do that. There you go. First view of the building. And then the next slide, please, Bates. So that's what we just talked about, about tonight. And we'll move forward to the uh, to the concept. So the concept, the Operations Master Plan, we planned on expanding that. The idea came out of what if we co-located the departments, you know, Public Works, Maintenance Services. You know, put planning, building together, so all co-located. And then also uh, municipal court, getting that out of police department so they could have their building back because of benefit. And uh, next slide, please. So the benefits, uh, I think we got more benefits than we even initially planned on, but uh, co-late, co-locating the departments just makes it one stop shop for permits, easy access for the community. Um, what it does is it puts all the people together and it's even now with COVID, it's working, it's easy to get ahold of everybody, meet with people and uh, it just works really well for uh, efficiency sake. You know, after run downtown, meetings will be easier. Looking forward when COVID ends so to see how practical it actually is. It'll be very helpful. The other thing it does enables finance administration to get back together, move back to city offices, saves them money for that rental space that we're leasing. And uh, it meets all of our current needs. We were busting at the seams at operations. Everybody was, you know, kind of maxed out in space. Now we, as you directed us to build a little bit of extra space out of Tuolton City Services, a little bit of space back in city offices where everybody is. Um, it benefits everybody in a lot of ways for those reasons. Next slide, please, Bates. The timeline, let's talk about timeline for a little bit and talk about uh, what happened. So back in twenty eighteen, in the fall, concept talked about, come out and what about if we did this project? So what we did is we did a study. We did a look at, is it possible? What are the benefits? Can we afford it? And once we figured out that we could and we came to council and talked about the project, we uh, got approval and moved forward with the hiring the owner's rep, which was Plan B, Gerald Maruni, Ernest Vasquez. Helped us and we hired architect Scott Edwards. And then in conjunction with that, we hired Bremet Construction and do the CMGC and design, build, design and then build the project. Permitting was done by Washington County. The construction actually started in uh, February of twenty twenty one with substantial completion based on the end of February or twenty twenty, I should say, with substantial completion uh, ending on February twenty twenty one at the end. And through all of this, through the COVID situation, through the smoke, through all of these things, substantial completion was done within two weeks of what projected start with date was, which is pretty amazing when you think about it. Uh, one of the reasons for that is, is the team that we built, um, were very mobile and whenever we had problems, worked together really quickly for solutions, practical solutions, cost effective solutions. And we're able to to start to move in substantial completion in early March. Uh, we still got three things to do out of city center. One of those is each year, each project, one point five percent um, goes to energy savings. And part of that, um, we're gonna expand our solar system that that's out there on the Fleet Shop to meet those that our P will be coming out as we wind the project down. That's left to be completed. We're waiting on uh, the generator, uh, switchgear is delayed. Waiting on that, that'll be completed in July. And other than some missing furniture, I think went by the Panama Canal, I'm not quite sure, we're still running that down. Some cubicle walls and a few, a few items. Other than that, uh, there's some small items. We're basically done. Which is a great feeling and a and a and a great opportunity to be here to say thank you for that. Um, next is the city offices remodel. We're just finishing up that. And uh, we've got a few things, but everybody's moved into the building now. Um, getting settled in and we're probably about four or five weeks away from completing that project. And uh, so that's kind of where we are as far as the schedule goes. So the project, one of the reasons for this slide is to talk about all of the people involved. One of the things we were doing is building a building, but we're also building culture. You think of all the things we've done, everybody being separated, everybody working together. And I can't think that's all of the city staff and everybody and all the support. enough for how this has all come together. Executive team, we had deploy advisory committee that helped us well. Everybody's still continuing to consult and talk about what are the next steps as we move forward, bringing people in for the, as COVID goes away and more people come on site. It's a very collaborative effort, very, it's a, it's just been a great experience. Uh, for all of the challenges we've had, like with any building, there always is. And there's always a why this and why that, which I'm encouraging to ask any questions about. You see or the what or the why, please let us know that. And uh, next slide, please Bates. Budget, never-ending question about the money. So I happen to say that uh, we've done the project. Within budget, it's under the eight million. We'll be right at, be right on track. Um, four million of it's paid for the existing funds and any four million of it is through a loan. Um, located on the general fund contribution, just as it says there. And uh, should be uh, should be right on, right on target, right on time. And if you, do you remember that first slide that you saw, that picture, that concept? There's the actual picture there of the building. Go ahead. So internal services department is now located at city manager's office, human resources, finance are all information services, don't forget those. Since Bates is sitting here next to me. Uh, so everybody is now moved out, syndicate building is closed out, we ended that lease at the end of April. Um, facilities, all the other staff are moved in that, out at the operations. And again, it's starting to get settled in now. There were just a slight remodel. We just did a few uh, wall change. We added a couple of walls for offices. Uh, changed break room and a few other minor items in the city offices, but nothing major. Okay, for the next one. And then I'm going to turn over to Megan for talk about the communications.
Yeah, thanks, babe. Can you all hear me okay? Am I coming through? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Got headphones. No, I'm not always sure that they're connecting. Um, so on the communication side of things, we had a couple of different stakeholder groups that we kept in mind throughout the project. So of course, one of those groups was internal to the organization. So that was our staff as well as the city council. Um, and we structured a lot of our communication programs around getting input from them on the design, getting input on how we can move into the building together, what types of administrative and cultural processes we need to put in place. And we continue to have those conversations. Um, the other group that we needed to think about was external to the city, so the public at large. Um, given the coronavirus pandemic, certain things were shifted from what we had originally thought we would do. Um, so this slide includes a bullet point list of some of the things that we've done to start to communicate and a lot of these things have begun and are, continue to be in progress. Um, so kind of the easy and the first thing we did was update the website and update the Google listings. Uh, we're also working on a news release, uh, and then May issue of Twelton today, we had an e-newsletter article come out and we'll have some additional social media posts to orient folks. A lot of the messaging is related to where you can find services that you may be looking for. Um, and to that effect, at each of our facilities where we have a map that will be available that shows the six different city facilities where we have staff working out of it. Um, and how you can get to one from the other. Um, and we'll have those blown up large and as available as handouts there. Um, the last thing that we had in mind was some sort of ribbon cutting ceremony or open house. Um, ideally we'll like to do that in the future when it is a little bit safer to do that and bring people together. Um, but as Clay described, the space, both spaces look really nice and they're coming together. So we're excited to have folks in the building and be able to use some of those public rooms. I think that wraps up the slides. Um, so I know Clay is available for questions and myself if you've got any.
Questions for Clay? Or, or Megan?
Not for Clay.
Only Clay.
We, we didn't include many slides because we wanted to come out and see it, so.
Well, I, I drive by it a lot. It's like you said, it's progressed quickly and looking forward to seeing the insights here soon.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, happy to give you a tour anytime.
Council Brooks.
Well, I just want to say thanks to Clay and everybody that worked together and it sounds like that you um, really led this project as a project manager in a really collaborative way, which is so important when everyone is being affected, um, not only where people are working, but how people are working together and like what you said, thinking about in a cultural way, so. Um, and then of course, just the practicalities. Thanks for coming in on time and our budget.
That was good. It was a good project with the good people. Lots to celebrate.
Any other questions for Clay? I just, just one comment I noticed, I was laughing the other day when I drove by the police department, the blue directional signs for municipal court with that like kind of reddish tape over it and then arrows.
You could, you could see the signs didn't, the signs didn't get here, not, they're not up on, on time.
I was cracking up with the red tape, the little arrow on the other one, but, but that's when I knew the move had, move had finished when that was taped over.
There are, like with any project, there are a few things that like, well, should have, would have, could have, you know, those little things that, the fortunate part of it is, is they're very minor and fixable.
Yep.
And, and will be fixed in a short amount of time, so.
Yeah, so I've just, to remind anybody who's watching this now or watches the rerun, that the municipal court is now located in this new facility and no longer in the Twelton Police Department's uh, training area or large conference room. Don't go there, go to our new uh, our new building down on Herman. All right. Well, thank you Clay and Megan.
You got it. Thank you for all your support. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right. So our last item on the agenda tonight is a presentation from Republic Services. Uh, Ms. Lewis and Mr. Mathias. Good to see you.
Hi, it's great to see you all too. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm here tonight, I'm KJ Lewis. I'm your municipal relationship manager with Republic Services and I'm here with Will Mathias, uh, our business unit finance manager and Jason Jordan, who I'm sure you all know, he's our general manager. Um, tonight we're going to present to you our annual report and some updates. Um, I'd like to come annually uh, to just, two years feels like a long time and especially after last year, which was about like twenty years, mushed into one year. Um, I think it's good to catch you up on, on things that are happening at, you know, locally up to the legislative level. Um, there's a few things that I'll mention that we're not going to be asking you to vote on tonight, but that's sort of more like a heads up and we'll come back in the fall and discuss with you again. One of those is that we do present this annual report to your city on, it's due on March fifteenth every year. Um, but during that time, we're also reporting out to the county. Um, which is all due at March thirty-first. So um, what we report on, and you can see this in your packet, they're, they're not fully accurate numbers. So we'll be asking you in the fall to move that deadline so that we can use the, the county reports that we're doing um, to be more accurate in your, in your annual report instead of having a disclaimer that numbers will be finalized later. Um, but I'm just going to jump right into my presentation at this point. Is that okay? Can I share my screen? Let's see, here we go. Okay, can everybody see that now? Oh, I don't know why it makes it smaller. Um, okay, so we're all here. Um, here's some service facts um, for your city. Uh, we have twenty drivers servicing Twelton and we have nineteen vehicles serving your city and as you know, and if you've ever come to visit us at WRI, um, their CNG vehicles, natural gas vehicles. Um, you might be interested in the tonnage collected last year of the over eleven thousand residential tons uh, collected, about thirty-five hundred tons was yard debris, which is broken out in your annual report, but that will be relevant in what we're gonna, what I'm going to talk about in a little bit. Um, I'm tracking legislation and there's two bills that I just want to draw your attention to um, that you may be hearing more about. One is Senate Bill five eighty-one. Uh, down there, it's called the truth in labeling uh, bill. What it originally set out to do was um, require producers, plastics producers to be on, well, to um, how should I say this? So you know, when people see the, there's a lot of consumer confusion when you see the chasing arrows and there's a number inside and you think, well, that must mean this is recyclable. And that's not always the case in every market. So this Senate Bill five eighty-one sought to have truth in labeling for Oregon, so that products, plastic products that, you know, your cottage cheese tub or whatever you were buying, um, had a label on it to let consumers know if it was actually recyclable in the state of Oregon. It got watered down a little bit before it moved to ways and means and now um, it's you know, I am actually surprised it moved to ways and means, but at this point it might, uh, if it moves out of committee, it's just going to create a task force, but it'll be back with a lot more fanfare in two years. Um, Senate Bill five eighty-two is, is the big one. Um, that is directing DEQ to make recommendations to modernize Oregon's recycling system and you'll hear a lot about this bill. Um, it's been a lot of work. It's the DEQ bill, but they uh, it was a, a coalition or a, you know, a committee of haulers and producers and processors and local governments and state government, people, really big committee, two years of work to come to the beginning of this bill, which is now on its dash nine amendments, moved out of the Senate Energy and Environment and now sits in Ways and Means. Um, it's a really, really big bill. And what it is looking to do is to create a standardized list for the state of Oregon of what's recyclable so that there's also to reduce uh, consumer confusion. So there's not, you know, something that's recyclable in the metro area, but it's not recyclable in um, Ashland or, or something or, you know, uh, Wasco County or, so, so there would be just a standardized list that could be improved upon, like maybe something's, you know, maybe there's more opportunity for that object to be recycled in a metro area as opposed to really rural county, but that'd be a standard list. It also puts a lot more responsibility on the plastic producers again to um, have a stake in the game and would create a PRO or PROs, producer responsibility organizations to ensure that the plastics that are being used in packaging and the like uh, would be recyclable and um, part of that list. So it, it's really interesting. A lot of other states are looking towards us um, for leadership on this and um, we'll see, we'll see what happens to it. As you can imagine, there was some opposition. But we are supportive as is our um, our association. This is just a quick reminder of what uh, a franchise is and we are one of your franchises. Um, in particular, uh, chapter four fifty-nine establishes the city authority to enter into solid waste franchise agreements and you know, DEQ and counties have waste stream authority. Your particular franchise has a five-year rolling term and three percent uh, of a fee, a franchise fee is paid to the city. We work really closely with your staff. You have such great staff to work with. We meet monthly. Um, and you know, we provide these annual reviews and of course, council has, as you know, the authority to adjust rates from time to time. Uh, onto customer service. Here's a summary from twenty twenty-two of calls into our customer service centers. Uh, we have two in the state of Oregon, one in Woodburn, one in Corvallis and we're staffing them up. As you can see, if you remember from last year, now we have seventeen full-time customer service representatives. Um, call times, I don't know if you can see that, but they average twelve seconds. So it's pretty short wait time and over sixty percent of the calls that originate in Oregon are answered in Oregon. So um, we're constantly improving and uh, you know, aiming to have local people answer local issues. Here's some nice compliments that we received from the city of Twelton from some constituents in your, in your city during twenty twenty. And this is another one of those heads up. Uh, we'll come back in the fall to discuss further, but um, as you may know, Metro's commercial organics program has been postponed again until next year. But on the residential side, we're prepared to work with staff to provide residential organics to residents um, like we do in your neighboring cities of Lake Oswego and Wilsonville, if that's of interest to council. Um, there is some public education that's needed in advance of a launch, so uh, if this is something that uh, council would like, at council's direction, we would begin developing the program and the outreach program with staff. Um, there will be a cost associated, but it's not in the forecast we're presenting tonight because as I said, we'll come, we'll come back to talk more about it in the fall. And um, while I'm on this slide, I should also mention, we don't have a slide for it, but the bulky waste program, uh, you know, the bulky waste events that we've held in the past for your city. You'll be hearing more from Will about Metro, but I'd like, and Jason, but I'd like to let you know that Metro is no longer offering a voucher to offset the cost of bulky waste disposal as they have in the past. And um, when I spoke to Metro staff, they told me that there was no plan to reinstate that, that voucher. So usually those costs are between four and five thousand dollars per event, depending on attendance. Um, there's a few actions that council can take and we can talk more about it in the fall. Um, you could wrap these costs into rates, which again, are not included in our forecast tonight. Uh, the city could pay the cost for the event. Council could decide to reduce the number of events from two times a year to, to just once a year. Or um, council could decide to uh, discontinue the service, but like I said, it's something to keep in mind. We can come back and answer any questions you may have in the fall. Something to think about on, on both ends with organics and bulky waste. And now I'm going to hand it over to Jason to talk about our very interesting year.
Hey, good evening, Marion Council. I, I just, um, I'm coming to you from Boise. I wasn't sure if I was going to make it on to the council meeting tonight. Um, I did talk with, with KJ and Will though, and um, the city of Twelton is, is pretty near and dear to me. Uh, been able to provide updates for the last uh, five going on six years. And you know, one of the things that, that I have a passion for is the people uh, in our uh, business unit that support the city. And so having an opportunity to talk about what our company did through uh, the pandemic, through the wildfires, and then most recently the ice storms. Um, it's something I, I take a lot of passion behind and want to make sure that, that this story is shared um, in regards to the type of partner that you have with uh, with Republic Services. So just wanted to hit real quick, uh, briefly on the wildfires. Um, obviously that was a pretty significant event uh, for everyone, including ours. And, and one thing that, that we always uh, take very seriously, we are an essential uh, function of the cities that we support. And so you know, we have to really uh, go into emergency planning mode to make sure that we can provide at a minimum, the basic services um, to, to our communities. And so a couple of highlights I want to point out uh, during the wildfires is, is services were minimally disrupted. Um, at one point we had um, various number of employees in the entire business unit. There's two hundred and sixteen employees up through the Portland Metro, down through Marion County. And at one point, um, we had well over uh, fifty that uh, had been evacuated at some point from their homes uh, for various reasons. And with those, uh, we're able to provide gift cards or, or vouchers to help uh, with provide meals or anything else that, that would uh, be needed there. And then also provide lodging. Uh, lodging came uh, at a very um, I guess, quick need for many that had to evacuate uh, quick. And so our team sprung into action and secured lodging to ensure that our folks and their families um, could have peace of mind. So then therefore they, they can come into work and, and again, service the cities. We also spring in action with additional PPE. Uh, as we know, uh, the wildfires was one thing, but the air quality was another significant concern. And so while we provided PPE that included goggles, uh, additional types of masks, uh, we also monitored the air quality hourly and ensured that at any given point where the air quality uh, slipped into a hazardous condition, um, that we would call routes off and, and notify customers accordingly. So um, again, just something I think we're very proud of being able to minimize the disruptions there through the wildfires. And then as we move on to the most recent event, the ice storms that we incurred. This is something that I know I had spoken to council briefly back at the end of February, specifically to some of the, the actions that we've taken there. And as we've closed this out, this is the, some of the final results that we, we had here. At the peak, we actually had over a hundred of our employees that were without power. Although six employees and their families, we put up in hotels. And then one of the large, largest issues that we ran into that many with the loss of power was food spoilage. And those coming back without any sort of food for families as they were displaced. And so we ensured that we were providing anything we could in terms of meal assistance for those employees and their families. Also, we had many families that could not leave, their family members of various health, health reasons, or many of our families have many animals. So right, being able to stay on their farms and taking care of their animals was important. So we actually did spring action and provide a few generators for those areas that were hardest hit. And now we're able to have those on hand should any future events such as that occurs again. And then most notably, not only with the city of Tuolton, but all the surrounding cities and communities. You know, we spring in action to make sure that we were able to provide any sort of assistance with the hauls. And at our kind of last calculation that we had hauled more than a hundred and twelve tons of storm debris throughout the Portland Metro area, which was very significant when we looked at that. Before I move into and hand and the, the kind of the financial review over to Will. Mary, you'd ask a question, I just wanted to make sure that we, we addressed, you know, pretty point blank with, that was asked to Metro regarding the increase in the fees and taxes and then what that amount was. The increase in fees and taxes that is going to take effect in July was eight dollars and forty cents per ton. That also does not include an additional fifty cents per ton for the community enhancement fee that's paid for the local city, which again, WRI is housed out of. So just want to make sure, Marion Council, that the group understands that that is, that is the amount that's being passed on for the fees and tax increase that we will be talking and will be kind of given more of the detail around that. So with that, I will turn it over to Will to provide our financial updates.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us. Tonight, I would just like to share with you our financial review. And this includes last year's rate adjustment. And then talk about Metro's tip fee increase, the, the increase in fees and taxes that Jason shared with you is out of our WRI facility. Metro's locations, the tip fee increase actually goes from ninety-eight thirty-five a ton to one hundred fifteen dollars and fifteen cents a ton. It's a sixteen dollar and eighty cent increase or seventeen percent. That's being implemented July first. And those increases were, were unknown to us in our last forecast that we presented in front of the city. And so that's a pretty significant change. And then also tonight, we just want to ask council to consider a future adjustment based on the increase in the Metro tip fee. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in a few slides. So last year's rate adjustment, along with additional industrial volumes, helped improve our revenue. Our revenue improved by four point nine percent year over year. And in our forecast last year for two thousand and twenty, we expected operating and overhead costs to be approximately eight point nine million. And I'm pleased to report that even with additional volume and added revenue, we were able to improve cost efficiencies. And overall, we actually were thirty-three thousand dollars favorable to the forecast that we presented last year. This resulted in an operating margin that was higher than expected at thirteen point one percent or a net income margin of nine point four percent. Though there were some short-term COVID factors that played a part in those cost improvements through COVID, we were able to create and carry forward some sustainable cost efficiencies as well. KJ, would you please turn it to the next slide? Thank you. So from a, an expense standpoint, year-over-year labor increased ten point four percent. That's, that's a large percentage increase, but most of that, aside from stemming from, from wage adjustments, is also from that increased industrial volume. And there were some increased labor related to our residential pickups as well, as weights were heavier. Republic reduced maintenance costs and benefited quite a bit from greatly reduced fuel prices in two thousand and twenty. Disposal and recycling costs, even with increased industrial volumes and heavier residential container weights. Overall, they remain relatively flat as a result of reduced industrial and commercial container weights. Also, in that particular line, when we shared this last year, there was a significant impact from how the global recycling markets have, have changed. And while we, we haven't seen anything that indicate that, that would indicate they would go back to what they were before, those costs seem to have stopped increasing anyway. From another operating cost standpoint, larger increase there. But that really encompasses a variety of items, but mainly this is where you'll find additional cost factors for taking care of our employees through the COVID crisis and the fires, which Jason talked about earlier. And then of course, overall, we reduced our G and A costs through efficiencies as well. From a forecast standpoint, our forecast considers volumes to be flat and stabilize cost factors, which both carry a modest risk, but really there are higher expectations of increase in fuel and disposal. So we'll talk about those for just a few minutes. So last year, fuel price definitely came down quite a bit and that benefit was in our P and L. But this year, we've seen fuel costs now increase back to around twenty-five to thirty percent over the last year. Disposal and recycling. You know, they, those lines in the forecast weigh the cost of the increased Metro tip fee. Again, that's seventeen point one percent, a little less out of our WRI facility, but still a large impact based on that. Based on the disposal versus recycle mix, you won't see a, a full seventeen point one percent in this forecast. What you see is a little bit in twenty twenty-one and a little bit in twenty twenty-two, based on the timing of that increase, that total up to twelve point seven percent. This forecast also doesn't consider, as KJ mentioned, the added cost of, of the organics program. And, you know, Republic were prepared to work with staff to offer this program. And, and so there would be some public education needed and a need to develop materials in conjunction with staff. And if the council's in favor of adding this program in, we can adjust our forecast to add this either in the fall or in January to coincide with, with a rate adjustment. Go ahead and move it forwards. Thank you. So this chart, and we, we showed this chart last year as well. The red dotted lines really represent the upper and lower bound of a range of profitability that's generally accepted in this area, eight to twelve percent of op income. And, you know, the midpoint of that ten percent is represented in the dark blue line. And then the light blue line is where our profitability has been. So before I talk about, you know, our profitability, if you, if you find yourself kind of with the question of why ten percent or that eight to twelve percent range, I just wanted to share with you that ten percent isn't really the profit that, that goes to the shareholders. Really from the ten percent, we then pay about three percent of that in taxes. And then three percent of that is cash required for new trucks and cash reserves for daily operating activities. So that leaves about four percent that actually gets returned to shareholders in, in that situation. So the light blue line, that represents our profitability level. And in two thousand and twenty-one, we, it shows us to be at nine point five percent. And that's really with, that's without a rate adjustment in two thousand and twenty-one. We feel like with the efficiencies that we gained in two thousand and twenty, we're really able to absorb the impact in two thousand and twenty-one of that increased Metro tip fee. However, our margin would drop to about seven and a half percent in two thousand and twenty-two, absent an adjustment in two thousand and twenty-two. So tonight, just, we're asking that council consider a January first, two thousand and twenty-two adjustment, just to counter the, the added cost of the seventeen percent Metro tip fee increase on our two thousand and twenty-two income statement. KJ, if you would, please flip to the next slide. So, so this slide breaks down for a thirty-five gallon customer, which most of, most of Tuolton's residents are in a thirty-five or sixty-five gallon cart. It breaks down the, where the rate goes to. And you can see the largest piece of that highlighted in green is disposal and recycling. Oftentimes, those costs, you know, are, are determined by market factors and outside of our control, such as the Metro tip fee increase and the increase in the regional system fee and Metro excise tax. And so those impacts will drive a large impact to our actual P and L. Here you can see that it's forty-two point seven percent of where that thirty-five gallon rate payer's rate goes to. That's followed by labor twenty, around twenty percent. And then net income of nine point four percent would kind of be third in line there. KJ, please flip it to the next slide. Okay, so this next slide just really shows the current rates and the, are the rates that we're proposing for January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Again, most Tuolton residents are in a thirty-five or sixty-five gallon cart. And those increases would be a dollar twenty-eight or a dollar seventy-one respectively. It should be noted that the Metro tip fee increase of the seventeen percent tip fee increase, that would equate to about a dollar thirty per, per resident impact. And so for the most part, for a thirty-five gallon customer, that increase is covering the, the tip fee increase. And for a sixty-five gallon, it's most, most of that is going towards the tip fee increase. So with that, thank you. I will, I will turn it back over to Jason Jordan.
Yeah, thank you, Will. So just to close out, you know, one thing that I think is pretty neat that I have a lot of pride in is, you know, we are a national corporation. I think that gets a lot of scrutiny about, right, what that looks like on the local front. And, you know, we have, like I said before, two hundred and sixteen individuals that live here, work here, spend their money here and take a lot of pride in the, in the communities. In fact, the driver workforce that directly supports Tuolton's surrounding areas actually has an average tenure of about seventeen years with the company, which is almost unheard of nowadays in terms of just the, just the level of commitment they have. And so the last slide really just speaks to, I think, the company's stance on, on making sure that, you know, we are promoting a very, I guess, equity-based ethical approach to what we do. And I think that's very important. I think, you know, listening to the earlier part of this council meeting, you know, a lot of conversations around diversity, equity, inclusion. And, you know, one of the things I think that's, that's not mentioned here is, you know, we have our own, what we call our mosaic program, which is the mission of supporting an inclusive culture. And we have Let's Talk Series where we invite members of, of different minority communities to have real conversations, which we air. And then we play for all of our employees to have real honest conversations. And I was actually fortunate enough to be part of that with the most recent Asian American and Pacific Islander conversations around our experiences and shedding light on to the rest of our thirty thousand plus employees. So we take a lot of pride in that. This is just to give you an idea of, you know, how that's being recognized nationally as well. And so finally, you know, just to, to kind of recap everything, I think the first piece is understanding that what, what Will presented in regards to the adjustment we're looking at for two thousand and twenty-two is directly tied to what we foresee the Metro fees and tax increase to be. And we've taken a very, I think, responsible and, and proactive stance about making sure that we're managing what we can control and, you know, being very responsible in that, on the local front as well, which I think is shown in, in where's our results were in two thousand and twenty. And then we anticipate that to be over the next couple of years. And then I think finally, I just want to say thank you to, you know, the council, to the city. We've been very fortunate for a number of years to have such great partners with both the, the city council, the staff, the residents and the businesses. And we're just very thankful to be part of that and to serve this community. So with that, I will open up for any questions that the council may have.
Question for the Republic team, Council Pratt.
Well, first I have a quick question on your breakout, the monthly payment, what it goes towards on the income taxes. Does that include just the taxes that would be paid to the state and federal in Tuolton? Or is it the taxes averaged for the state or for your whole company? Where does that number come from?
So it includes the federal and state taxes. And while we don't always for the federal, we aren't always able to get down to the granularity of seeing what it is just for our business unit here in Oregon. That is the impact. Yep. And that, that's just the impact for the company.
Okay. And then I just wanted to thank you because I, I think I've heard you speak once before and you, I always sense that you have a focus on really valuing your employees and really trying to be a good service provider and running a really effective and efficient company. So I really appreciate that. And then lastly, I just wanted to start it off by saying I would be very interested in hearing more about the Residential Organics Program. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions? Trying to look around here, everybody on the screen here. Missing. I don't see Bridget. Where Bridget go? All right, other questions? But while I'm looking for Bridget, I think she might have dropped off. All right.
It appears that she's dropped off.
All right. Thanks to call. If no one else has a question, I got, so clarify for me. You're talking about July and January, so you're looking for a rate increase request. You know, with this coming new fiscal year in July and then I'm hearing, I'm assuming I'm, what I'm hearing is that you're going to be coming back in the fall for another rate increase in January?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll, I'll clarify that. We are going, as a company, going to incur the fees and tax increase from Metro in July of this year, two thousand and twenty-one. What we're proposing and, and requesting for council to consider is the four point six percent rate adjustment to take effect for the city of Tuolton in January of two thousand and twenty-two. So we're, we're going to carry and absorb the cost for the, the six months just due to the fact of where we've looked at from our cost efficiency, cost efficiencies and some of the other gains that we had through the last year. So it would not impact the city until January of two thousand and twenty-two.
So the rate increase on the current and proposed rates, the four point six percent wouldn't take effect till January?
Correct.
Right. So raised for now would stay where they are. You come back, you know, be in ordinance, look at stuff, discussion. And if it was approved by city council, the rate increase wouldn't be till January.
Correct, Mayor. And I think one of the things that we wanted to look at too was, again, potential, you know, organics program and things like that, where we have plenty of time now to look at that, when we look at kind of that effective mindset of, of January of two thousand and twenty-two.
My personal opinion on the organics is I remember this discussion from a couple of years ago. And I know Grims has significantly improved their operations. And they have dumped a bunch of money into aeration for composting. I know the concern back then was the capability of Grims to handle organics coming in. Not that they couldn't, but that would be one of my thoughts. Because as Council Rosenthal mentioned, they're not a heck of a lot of composters left in the metro region. Grims is one of them. And I don't want to open up a whole other bag of worms here. The smell's coming from Grims because the organics can't be handled, so. Smells coming from Grims because the organics can't be handled, so.
Yeah.
Certainly discuss this later, but that was one of my big concerns.
Well, Mayor, and I can I can demystify that a little bit for you too, is Grims currently right now is licensed to take yard debris. So as we introduce the residential organics or right food material, that material will actually not go to Grims, that goes to the compost facility, PRC, which is down outside of Corvallis across from Coffin Bude. So any of the organics program introduced for the city of Twolton will not go to Grims, which I think is always a concern based on on the past.
Thanks for that clarification. Other questions for Republic? All right.
So with that. Councilor Brooks is joining back in right now.
Okay, thanks. Do you have a question, Council Brooks, or about to wrap this one up?
No, sorry, I just lost my connection and I'm back and I'm sorry I missed part of the discussion. I was interested in. I'm not sure where we are in the conversation.
All right, so the just try to figure out, so no rate increase in July. You'll be coming back to us in the fall with a rate increase request for January, correct? Just like summarize that because Bridget was missing. All right.
No, 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 the the we'll be back, the rate increase, the resolution would come back on the next council meeting under consent that would take effect in January of two thousand and twenty-two. But we would bring it back if you are amenable to it and give us that direction, you would see it on your next, on the May twenty-fourth council meeting.
Right.
Well.
Folks want to come back, sounds like in the fall for a follow-up presentation. Correct?
We could do that if if council desires.
Okay. Council Brooks.
My only question is, will we have an idea of what the tip fee is going to be by next session? Or does that matter? What, I mean, to me, that makes a difference when considering what we want to do, what I what I think.
Yeah, Councilor Brooks typically with the metro kind of updates of what they would look at their kind of next fiscal year increases to be usually comes out in October, November. However, that would not take an effect until July of the following year, July of two thousand and twenty-two. So we have an understanding of what at least from July two thousand and twenty-one to July two thousand and twenty-two look like.
Okay, thank you very much. That's helpful. And can I ask one other question as far as services go? I feel like during this time, there's a lot more delivery and cardboard due to COVID and people delivering from Amazon. And I'm just curious. Is how? How is that? As far as recycling goes, is how's the strategy for recycling? And, you know, this is something that I think about with this time. And I don't know about you guys, but once in a while I get a small item in a giant box and I'm just wondering where all this cardboard's going and how you guys are handling all that.
Yeah, Councilor Brooks, that's a great question, and I'll kind of give a summary of that. I know KJ talked a lot about what's going on on the state level with legislation, which I think is addressing a lot of what, you know, KJ mentioned that extended producer responsibility. We do see obviously the increase in in cardboard, which I think what we've seen, if everyone remembers back in in two thousand and eighteen with China Sword and and the exports of everything, a lot of domestic mills being started up. And so the cardboard's being used there. Our local processors are able to provide pretty much monthly updates to to looks at the what we call our OCC or the cardboard market to be pretty strong right now. But it's always a little bit of supply and demand about when, you know, usually at this stage or a little bit before you're getting the ramp up for the Christmas rush with all the cardboard and shipping. So it's a little bit of it's still a changing market. However, I think what we saw in terms of of the, I guess, the very change month over month has stabilized a lot more based on a lot more things coming back domestically to be processed.
Well, thank you and thanks for your support with that because I think that helps because if we can just figure out a way of being more efficient with packaging and people that are producing that, be more invested in that. And I was, I will say, when I first started council, I went to an informative thing, I forget what it was, but where I realized, you know, there's federal also tax write-offs for the plastics are actually federally. I forget the term, but funded. So I think that it's it's a big conversation and I'm glad that you brought more information to us from the state level at least tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Council Reyes.
Thank you, Jason. You and your team have always been great in our community and address a lot of issues that, especially in the now to all Latinos group, but it used to be diversity task force, you guys were always on top of answering questions and and try to help the community that speak Spanish only. My question is, there there will be an increase again, because it seemed like in the last year or so, a couple of years, it seemed like it went up significantly for somebody, you know, like because it seems like it's two dollars here, three dollars there, but it does seem like a lot in the last, since I've been on council probably three times. How is your communication to the community that this is going to be happening? And I'm interested to hear how that's going to be communicated because obviously it's just another addition to the things that are coming to, you know, to the to a lot of these things that are happening after the time, like after the pandemic, we're still kind of, you know, people are kind of still waiting. But there's a lot of things that are going to be happening and pay, pay, you know, like a lot of these loans that were put on hold for a little bit or things that were put up now, it's going to start rolling and people are going to start kind of going back to a norm as soon as we all get completely vaccinated. How that communication is going to look like? And so what does that plan look like?
Well, I think the nice thing is, Counselor Reyes, it's nice to see you tonight. Um, I think the nice thing is that we have a lot of lead time because we can carry the water for the second half of two thousand and twenty-one and this rate increase wouldn't go into effect until two thousand and twenty-two, January first. And so that would give us some planning time with staff, first of all, but there's, there's a lot of different ways we could look at communication, especially if council, if when we return and council decides that we should move forward with an organics program, how we want to handle bulky waste or, you know, any of those sort of issues that are just hanging out there. We can work together. There's lots of things we can do. We can do bill inserts. We can print messages on bills in different languages. We could do, you know, work with your staff is so great at communications with social and, you know, city newsletters and, you know, look at radio. We'll absolutely do everything we can to communicate any changes because you're right. I mean, as the the world is changing again and we're we're facing all this uncertainty about what comes next, you know, what's the next part of this long saga of two thousand and twenty? I think communication is going to be key about all of these pieces.
Yeah, and I'll add one more thing, Council Reyes, one, you know, one thing we see the impact is being able to be right in the community, physically there, being able to walk, you know, our residents and community members through any sort of change in the process. However, COVID absolutely put put a damper on that. And so one of the things that we we have to ensure first is that those are able to go and do outreach within the communities, albeit we're not requiring vaccinations, but that they're safe. And that we get through this and we see some more of, you know, the changes with the the county risk levels and such. But, you know, I think there is a team here that's very excited to physically get out into the communities again, provide that almost as we as we were starting to plan for Stone Ridge and some of those areas, where just the the pandemic kind of sidetracked that. But that's a, that's a goal for us going into the second half, barring things being able to open up again.
Yeah, I think I like the how you, I I think that clear communication will be very important. And the because the way I have been, the way I hear it sometimes from my community that don't understand sometimes the process and the all these tips that occur are in cure and all that. They're like, oh, the city, the the city is putting more fees on our utilities and they see that we are the city that we're the ones doing that. But I think that I try to explain as much as I can. But one of the things that will in in your flyers would be good to to say something like how you explained to us right now. You will incur a lot of these fees until the end of December and then, of course, in January, two thousand and twenty-two. Then, you know, but so they can see that you are, your company is also doing some kind of effort to to help us at least kind of flat our our wallet here. So I think I think this will be, the way you present it to us will be good to be presented to the community in writing, kind of like, hey, you're not, we're all in this together. And we as a republic services are also incurring these, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's right that way. I'm just saying that it's, I understand the way you tell me. I wish my community would hear it the same way because it it just makes sense to me, but sometimes when it translates, it doesn't make sense or translated differently, but I I like that you're telling us what you're doing as well to help us out.
Good. I like that. I also, you know, this, in this particular case, it's, you know, because Metro is raising fees so so drastically, almost exclusively is why we're why we're here tonight on July first. You know, all of that is happening on July first. And as the mayor reminded you, they wanted to do this in, they wanted to raise the fees in December. And I think the local outcry from local leaders was enough for them to change their mind. But that will can certainly be part of that communication too, that it's not the city, that it's a direct result of Metro's policies.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions? All right. Well, thank you all for attending tonight. And I guess we'll see the rate request adjustment on our next city council meeting.
Thank you so much for having us. It's great to see you.
Mayor, Mayor, I think. Question, yeah.
Oh, I just wondered if we were going to ask that they come back in the fall and discuss the bulky waste options in the residential organics program? So we can learn more about that.
I don't think we have to do that tonight.
Okay.
I'm sure that the.
Well, they asked, they asked for a direction on that, so that's why I brought it up.
All right.
We'll be around.
Yeah. All right. All right. Well, thank you all for coming tonight. Appreciate your time. And I know, yep, we all know how to go hold each other. I know you guys will be in touch very soon.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
You too. All right, so that ends up, that ends general business. We did not have any items removed from consent tonight. So it brings us to council communication, since we didn't have a work session prior to this meeting, we'll do our council communications now. And I'll do in the order of the pictures on my Zoom screen here. So I think Council Hillier always ends up being the first one, it seems like.
Well, there you have it. Good evening, everyone. I was honored to be able to be at the chamber event, but I'll let others talk about that because I know Counselor Pratt had sent some notes and has some things to note or to mention about that. But other than that, I've just nothing to report.
All right, Council Pratt.
All right, since Councilor Hillier didn't want to go too far into the chamber event. For some reason, my laptop won't let me get into meetings, so I watched you all on YouTube. And, you know, Mayor Boubinac got the Lifetime Achievement Award and Jonathan got a very well-deserved community champion award. And I have to say, Cheryl and should have gotten an award for being the best presenter on a glitchy I thought you did an awesome job. And then the only other thing I have is I went to the C four, you know, Paco's Coordinating Committee meeting. And they had, they did an update, they did a some racial justice research and it's ongoing, but they really reached out to the BIPOC community and it seems what really stuck out to me is there it more than I've heard before, there's a a general feeling of not being welcome in the communities by these, the the people they interviewed. And, you know, they came out with a lot of the same needs, like need for representation and services in the rural areas that are somewhat unique to Quackamas County. So that's what I got of it. It's ongoing. And I do believe there might be, sounds like there'd be a task force or a committee with them next year. So so if anybody's interested, you might keep that in the back of your mind.
All right, thank you. Counsel Sacco.
Hello, so on April twenty ninth, we had our third and final urban renewal task force meeting. We reviewed the financials and the next steps. And those next steps will include an informational webinar that is supposed to take place on May seventeenth, so that's right around the corner. So I think once we see those communications come out that, you know, any assistance getting that information out to the public is helpful. And then in July, there will be public input opportunities. So again, when you see those opportunities to to try to circulate that information as well. I know there's been some concerns about the folks that, you know, do live close to the area but aren't necessarily part of the city to provide input and being notified. And so we've worked through a lot of that in these meetings. But just keeping in mind that, you know, to reach out to the people that you know, to make sure that we get all the input during that public input process. And then the urban renewal will hearing will come before us in August. And that is all.
All right, thank you. Counsel Reyes.
Nothing is this last two weeks, so just you're invited to to all Latinos on the nineteenth of this month. That it's at seven and that so you can probably send you a link if you'd like to attend, but that's, that's all I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Brooks.
Hey, everybody. Sorry for dropping off there. On the twenty ninth of April, I attended the real council meeting for the NLC. And I just wanted to note, because some people know Leon Andrews is the director of that and he's stepping away to another position at another organization. So I think that's going to be really felt by the National League of Cities. He's been great leadership, not only for youth originally, but also in the real council, which is racial equity and leadership. I will say that I'm delighted to hear in the budget report about our efforts around more administration in DEI. And that's going to be good news for me for communicating and getting ideas and sharing information with other council members. As a lot of cities have moved forward on that, so I'm thrilled to hear that. And then I just want to also congratulate the mayor on the Chamber of Commerce Lifetime Achievement Award. Nice work. And you seem young to be getting a lifetime achievement award, but that just goes to show you what a great mayor we've got. So anyway, congratulations. And then I just want to say May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I want to thank Counselor Sacco again for her leadership around the standing against hate towards the AAPI community. And and so just really think about join me in learning more and knowing our neighbors better and supporting each other and especially Asian American and Pacific Islanders this this month. So. Asian American and Pacific Islanders this, this month, so. Um, and I also celebrated Orthodox Easter, which was on the second for all those, um, Orthodox. Christians out there, um. And on the fourth, I met with the Twelton. Uh, Community Police Foundation and I just wanted to say that because. Um, just acknowledging again Chief Steele's great leadership and, um. The recognition of police and remembering, um, people. That have fallen in line of duty on the fifteenth of the month is just a good reminder to hold. And thanks to the mayor too for your service because I know you're a military police. I also attended an information session on the equitable economic, um. Mobility initiative, which is being put out by the NLC. I have that information. I don't know if it's. Usable by our city, but there is funding available for, um. Helping with equitable. Jobs. And so if there's any feedback on that, please let me know and I'll forward the information. I want to say happy Mother's Day to the mothers. And also just acknowledging those people like myself who've lost their moms and sometimes it can be a tough day too. Um, or for people that haven't had kids. Um. And then I wanted to say that this. Uh, month's PAB meeting is going to be canceled this, but June will be happening. I did send out information. To you about rent assistance options and there are two, there's the landlord, it through the county. There's a landlord compensation fund that's available to landlords to help them. Address rental arrears. And then the second one is for emergency rental assistance programs. Um, for tenants of rental property. So there's two programs. The information's in your, um, email. If you have questions or anything, please reach out to me. Um, or shoot me an email or a phone call. Um, and then I'm looking forward to the state of the city. And wanted to thank also speaking of equity, the work on the reaching out program. I saw the thing where I was. Attempting to speak Spanish. It's been a long time since I took Spanish. I hope that it was understandable and I think that the video was, uh, really well done. So thanks again to Megan and to. All the staff that work hard on, um. Trying to make it easy to access, um. Our meetings. That's all. Thanks. Nice to see you guys.
You. That's President Grimes.
Hello, um, I just wanted to hop on the bandwagon and, um. Congratulate the mayor on his award. Given all the time and the dedication that you do. Um, volunteer, I think it could prob- probably be like a two lifetime award. But congratulations for that. And then yes, very much looking forward to Wednesday and the State of the City. Presentation, I'm sure, uh, the mayor is going to talk more about that too, how to watch and how to, um. Follow along, but I'm very excited to see that. And thanks again to staff and Megan for making that happen and all the hard work. That went into, uh, wrangling. At minimum, the seven of us, which probably wasn't easy and, um, everything else that went into it. So super excited for Wednesday. And, um, I'm sure the mayor will tell us more. Thanks.
All right. I guess I'll lead with that. Yes, so the State of the City, the reminder is on Wednesday from six to seven. It's a virtual event. Uh, you can, uh, go to CSWIP guy website to get more details, but you can attend it via. The internet or you can watch it on, uh, the local access government channel on Comcast. It's going to be about fifteen, twenty-minute video. I got the, uh, sneak preview of the video today. And you all nailed it. It looks really good. And, uh, terrific production from our Twelton Valley Cable Access folks. Um, but it turned out very, very well. Again, thank you Megan for that. Uh, I'll be in the studio in Beaverton on Wednesday night. Um, and we'll be fielding questions, uh, after the video is over. And, uh, look forward to that, uh, some good questions. And, um, of course, I'm spacing on his name. Uh, my co-host will be Brad Schmidt. I remember him from two years ago. He helped us with my first State of the City, so he's going to be my co-pilot on this one. In the studio, uh, fielding questions. And, uh, probably asking questions of his own because he is reporter, so I gotta be prepared for him too. Uh, pretty light on meetings was a nice break, uh, the last two weeks had informal meetings, but, uh, on the formal side. Uh, just a few big news, if you haven't heard. Is, uh, Pam Trees, who is the executive director of Westside Economic Alliance is resigning. Um, effective July, you also know the other hat she wears is as a Washington County Commissioner. So starting in July, Washington County Commissioner jobs become full-time positions. So she couldn't handle both of them at once, so she's decided. To turn the reins over to a new executive director for the Westside Economic Alliance. They will be beginning a recruiting campaign, uh, to fill, uh, Pam's seat. Uh, in July, so if you know folks who might be interesting, interested. And running that organization, it's a fairly large business-related organization, but also has several cities. Who, uh, provide, uh, advice and recommendations to Walton being one of them. Uh, send them to the WEA website because they will begin recruiting. At the Chamber Awards, yes, um. Lifetime achievement, that was a big one for me. I was like, yeah, I'm like, I still thought it had some years in me. But, uh, I guess I'll just, uh, keep on chugging. Uh, but I was very appreciative of the award. Um, I had some, uh. The folks that were in the same category have given to this community just as much as I have. Um, but I look forward to continue on serving the community. Uh, it's a wonderful award, wonderful recognition, but. We keep on doing what we're doing here, taking care of our community and taking care of our residents. And finally, I had a terrific discussion with, uh, Representative, Representative Prusak. Uh, I got ahold of her for a few minutes, uh, May fifth via phone. She wanted to send her regrets on not presenting to us yet, uh, kind of like, uh, Counsel Rosenthal did. As you can well imagine, she's just buried in the legislature right now. She, like us, uh, has a full-time job plus being a legislator, so she has had very little time to get out to her communities. But she wanted to touch base with me on a couple of things. One is, uh, as a representative, she's allocated. Some ARP dollars. And she wanted to know what projects were near and dear to Twelton, uh, that she could request funding for. Um, so we, I talked with her and she already talked to the chamber. She talked to the city a little bit. About those projects, if she has some money that can be awarded to us, we're willing to take right away. Um, I guess she has some money and so does Senator Wagner. Um, they divvied out funds to all the legislators and senators. Um, and so she made, reached out and wanted to know what was near there us. Uh, Stone Ridge Park was a subject of my discussion with her. Um, you know, once we get beyond design, uh. Stage, if we can get funds rapidly, but we'll see what happens. The other thing we talked about was the Tri-County Gun Club. Um, she is very well aware of some of our residents complaints about noise and a disruption at the gun club. Um, she was not aware that Washington County just went through a permitting process and that we did file a letter. Asking for basically, um. You know, that we understand, you know, what the rules are for Tri-County Gun Club and that's Metro, not Metro, so it's Washington County's jurisdiction. But these are some things we'd like to work on and one of them being, uh, noise abatement. And working as good neighbors. Uh, so she was thrilled to hear about that, but she is, uh, keeping her finger on the pulse of that issue. I understand she had a discussion with some city staff about it. Um, but she wants to be kept in the loop about what's going on at Tri-County Gun Club. With that, that's all I have. Anything else from anyone else? All right. So with that, we now get to our adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Zach at the same time. All right. The motion is second for adjournment and discussion of the motion. All of them favored, just raise your hand. Uh, all right. Good evening and have a terrific evening. As Counselor Brooks said, continue to wear your mask. Wash your hands, stay distance. Uh, we all can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but if we don't all get vaccinated and do what we need to do. We go over this hump. Let's do it. And so we can all hang out in restaurants again and bars. All right. Have a good evening.